I want to welcome you all to, at this point, at about 6:30, we're right about on time, the regular meeting of the-
Larkspur City Council, yeah, I'm sorry, I got the mic on. The regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council commencing this Wednesday, September 6th, 2017, at 6:30 PM. And with that, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Chu.
Here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hillmer.
Here.
And Mayor Harof.
Here. And with that, I'd like to ask everyone who can, please stand for the Pledge of Leigence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one law, indivisible, and free of any justice or law.
Okay, we'll move along with our agenda, and with pleasure, we have a proclamation to get started with this evening. This is a proclamation honoring the heroism of Suzanne Dolan and Melissa Latzki, and I think they are both here tonight, is that correct? Okay, yes. Yeah, why don't you stand up so everybody can see who you are? Thank you. And actually, why don't you come on up front, so you can listen, listen to us here.
We'll demonstrate.
Demonstrate, demonstrate your skills here.
You look like tennis players.
Okay, so, okay, okay, that's good, that's good. I'm going, I am going to read the city council's proclamation honoring the heroism of Suzanne Dolan and Melissa Latzki. Whereas, on July 20th, 2017, a victim became unresponsive on the tennis courts at Mount Tam Racquet Club. Whereas Suzanne Dolan and Melissa Latzki recognized the signs of cardiac arrest and responded to the victim's aid. Whereas Suzanne and Melissa immediately began CPR. God bless you for doing that, I wouldn't have any idea. Suzanne providing the victim with a combination of chest compressions and breaths. Whereas after several minutes of effective CPR, Suzanne and Melissa were relieved by officers from Central Marin Police Authority and firefighters from the Larkspur Fire Department. Whereas, yeah, how about a round of applause for those guys, too? Whereas the victim regained a pulse and was breathing prior to medical transport. And whereas the victim was transported to the hospital and due to the life-saving efforts of Suzanne and Melissa, the victim recovered and was able to walk out of the hospital within a week. Thank you so much. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin Harof, Mayor of the City of Larkspur, do hereby recognize with respect and gratitude the heroic actions and selfish courage of Suzanne Dolan and Melissa Latzki in the act of saving a life. Although many people are trained in CPR, some become hesitant to respond in a real emergency. Suzanne and Melissa were heroes on July 20th, as they responded without hesitation and utilized their training to save a life. I think I don't have to read the in-witness whereof. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Yay!
They are our witnesses. Thank you so much. Our pleasure, thank you for being such wonderful parts of our community.
Have you both taken CPR classes?
Can we get a, I think we got a-
I'm an ex-nurse.
You are?
Never an ex-nurse, always an ex-
And what about for you?
Well, 30 years ago, I was trained as a chemical first responder, EMT for Chevron, when I worked there.
There you go.
So I was pretty proud.
Stays with you.
What we're doing.
We both asked you to know what we were doing.
It's like being at work all over.
Yeah, that's great.
Wait a minute, I'm a Chevron all over here.
Please sit down, we have some photographs to be taken in the background, come around, so we can get your vehicle. And hold those things up, so we can see.
Read that fine, sir. Little paparazzi out there.
That's right.
It's the ISO paparazzi. Fantastic.
Okay, thank you so much.
That's great.
We might have to stay for the entire. I love the reading. Stay.
Oh, you guys don't want to leave, no! This is all the fun!
We're losing our whole audience here, that's all right.
Go train some people.
Okay, with, that was, I think, probably the highlight of the evening. So, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is Public Comment. This is a period of time when members of the public can speak on matters that are not listed on the agenda. So if you have something you'd want to say during this period, please approach the podium, state your name and city, which is optional. Individuals have three minutes to speak, five minutes if representing a group. The council is not permitted to take action and is strictly limited to discuss any item, not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action rose after the posting of the agenda, and that's by law. So, we have a welcome friend. If you'd like to announce your name, please.
Certainly. I'm Daniel Kunsler, and I live at One Ranch Lane in Larkspur, California. Thank you, Mayor Harof, and councilmembers. I'm speaking this evening as an individual resident conversant in immigration enforcement issues. I am not speaking in any capacity as a member of the Larkspur Planning Commission that I am. I'll keep my comments brief despite the complexity of the matter at hand. In short, I urge you to place on the council's agenda quickly the formulation of a position with regard to the California Values Act, or SB 54, preferably a straightforward endorsement. SB 54 restricts state and local agencies from expending resources for the sole purpose of facilitating deportations in the absence of other law enforcement imperatives. Please bear in mind that unauthorized presence in the United States is not a crime, it is a civil offense. It's tempting to invoke overarching federal authority over immigration matters in order to avoid confronting them. While that authority is real, threats to the safety and integrity of our community that indiscriminate enforcement that crosses the line into persecution makes this very much a local issue. Our jurisdiction includes many immigrant residents as well as immigrant workers, particularly in healthcare, critical to our well-being. The administration has reversed earlier directives instructing Immigration and Customs Enforcement to prioritize threats to public safety, replacing them with a catch-as-catch-can policy targeting anyone, anytime, anywhere with a predictable result of triggering fear throughout our immigrant community, including legal residents. I have witnessed it personally, and I suspect you have as well. It is a sad day when concerned citizens have to educate their neighbors on what to do if they get a knock on the door in the middle of the night, but that day has arrived. And now with the revoking of DACA, children are in lacrosse hairs. ICE aspires to deputize local law enforcement. The immigration code provides for voluntary cooperation between local police departments and ICE through programs such as 287G and Detainer Requests, but the operative word is voluntary. That's where SB 54 comes in, making its state policy to deny participation in such programs for the simple reason that they imperil our communities without providing any demonstrable benefit. As for threats to withhold appropriated federal funds for refusing participation in non-mandatory programs, well, see you in court. I recognize that the term sanctuary city may be more suited to larger cities than to smaller towns like ours. Also, sanctuary has no legal definition. By simply endorsing a state legislative proposal, the council avoids making a declaration that some might interpret as flamboyant. Further, while I advocate an unequivocal endorsement of SB 54, such as that provided by the Marin Board of Supervisors, there are other ways to express support as well. For one thing, individual councilmembers can personally endorse the measure, as I would urge each of you to do. I would also draw your attention to the letter drafted by the City of San Rafael that stops short of specifically advocating passage of SB 54, but suggestively outlines San Rafael's policing policy encompassing protection of its immigrant community. While this is too timid to my mind, it's a better-than-nothing approach that is available to you. Thank you, and please place this issue on your agenda with urgency.
Thank you, Daniel. That's very, those are very timely, I appreciate it very much. Someone else from the public? James?
James Holmes, Larkspur. I hadn't planned to address this, but in response to the prior comments, I know that the city has a longstanding practice of not taking positions on state and federal matters, and I believe that should be observed here. I also believe that this legislation is particularly relevant to the City of Larkspur because it primarily relates to the issue of jails and incarceration and liaison between the operators of jails and INS. And Larkspur does not have any jail, we do not operate any incarcerations, and this, unlike the county, and the Board of Supervisors may have addressed that because that is more relevant to an operation handled by the Board of Supervisors and the sheriff. Finally, I don't think the city should get involved in this because of the potential risk that if, that even though the concept of a sanctuary city is irrelevant to us, if Larkspur and smaller cities ally themselves with a failure to, or objection to sanctuary cities and policies which seem to put ourselves at variance with the federal government, we may be jeopardizing our authority, or our ability to obtain federal funds for matters like the Bonner Bridge. We really can't afford to take a position on something like this. And of course, our police does not have any liaison, as far as I know, with the ICE, and I think we reasonably could decline on the basis simply of staff shortages. But in any event, it is irrelevant to Larkspur and potentially risky, and I believe that Larkspur in this case should adhere to its standard procedure of not taking positions on, on state and federal matters. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Any other members of the public who would like to use this opportunity to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the evening and move on to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Approval of the Consent Calendar, and I believe that we have one item that someone wants to take off. So we'll take 4.4 off the consent calendar.
I was gonna suggest, Mr. Mayor, you add it to the back of the business items.
That'll be fine.
If that's the case, I will move to approve the consent calendar absent number 4.4.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved, and we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is our City Manager's Oral Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I only have three items for you this evening. The first is, I know it can be hard to believe, given we just had a pretty nice little heat wave, but your staff's actually thinking more about rain than we are about heat right now, because it's our time of year to begin preparing our storm drains for the rain season. And so I just wanted to first let folks know, you might see activity in and around storm drains throughout the city, that's our staff starting to assess and prepare them for the rainy season. It's also a reminder that it's time to do that around your own property, and to make sure that your gutters and drains are all clear and ready to handle the rains that we will see. So that's Item One. Item Two, I wanted to make sure it's disclosed to the council as a whole and the public. Since your last meeting, I've been working with a group that represents our franchise group that interacts with the Marin Santeri Service, our waste taller here in the city. Our group is studying the rate methodology that's, that's done, this is something we've done periodically. We felt it was appropriate as a staff group to engage some members of the councils and boards that are in the franchise group, so I asked the mayor if he and the vice mayor would act as a subcommittee to help me in that endeavor. And they did join me at one meeting at my request, and I think will serve as the committee through this brief process, as we sort of look at rate methodology in preparation for this year's analysis of the garbage rates. Pretty dry stuff, but interesting nonetheless, if, if you enjoy sort of the inner workings of how we calculate what the fair rate is for garbage. And then lastly, we're doing, as you know, this evening, we're going to present an update about Measure B. We've also secured a room to do a presentation next week that we would like to invite the community to, and we'll be posting on Nextdoor and other outlets. So we'll be doing a presentation for the community on September 12th, which is Tuesday, at 7:00 PM at the Central Marin Police Authority Community Room. And all are welcome. Be very similar to the presentation this evening, but folks will have an opportunity to chat with Mr. Skinner and me during and after that meeting if they'd like to. So those are my three items, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn it back to you.
Okay, well, thanks. And as you noted, Councilmember Hillmer and I both attended the Garbage Franchise Meeting last week. And Dan, maybe you've been at more of these meetings than I have, but I actually did find it kind of interesting. And I look forward to working with you and providing input to the larger committee about how our garbage and recycling rates will be assessed in the future. I thought it was interesting. So we will then conclude the City Manager's Oral Report and go on to Councilmember Oral Reports and Comments, Agenda Item Number Six. And if we could start with Councilmember Hillmer, anything?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Morrison? Councilmember Chu?
Well, it leaves me. Good, 'cause I have a few things, so. First of all, I want to begin by saying I rode the Smart train for the first time on, on Tuesday, and from end to end, it was packed with people, but I think it was actually a better experience than I had hoped for it to be, and it was something that I think we need to start addressing in Larkspur, because each station was very different from each other, and we're gonna eventually have a station down here. So I was gonna ask my colleague, Dan Hillmer, maybe in a couple of meetings to come, if you could give us an update on where that is, or even if you feel it's timely for us to have a presentation on Smart, because it is happening, and it was a packed train on Monday. So just love to put that on your plate, to see if you can give us sort of an update sometime in the future.
I'd be happy to, through the mayor, and I also would encourage, as soon as it's practical, to bring the issues in the, on the platform in Larkspur before the council for a discussion and status and flag issues for us to work on. I'll leave that to the City Manager.
Thank you. The second thing is, I'll be going to the California, the League of California Cities meeting next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and I just wanted to tell the council what the two resolutions you've agreed to let me vote on, because I'm the representative from Larkspur. And interestingly enough, these two resolutions, which are going to the General Assembly, both come out of the Public Safety Policy Committee, which Councilmember Chu and I both sit on. So interesting that every year the league votes on two to three different resolutions, and these two this year come right from the committee that Larry and I sit on. The first is, and I'd be happy later to explain in more detail if you want, or get it online, but just so you know what I've been, will be voting on, the request, the first one is a request for the governor and the legislature to work with the league to reduce the unintended consequences of some recent criminal law changes. And it particularly is AB 109, which transferred 45,000 felons out of the federal, out of the state prison system to local jails. There's three things the league's worried about. Proposition 47, which reclassified a host of felonies as misdemeanors. And then Proposition 57, which revised the rules for parole, which, to what is designated as a nonviolent crime. So the league and the cities, the support by the cities, to really have the governor and the legislature reexamine these policy issues because it's affecting the cities and our law enforcement capacity. So that'll be something that the community will be voting on, and there's a lot of support for this. And then the second seeks to modify a specific government code, kind of a complicated code about EMS, emergency medical services that are offered within the state. There happens to be 10 different places in the California government code in which it's there, and it's very confusing for a lot of the cities and towns. And so the league is supporting the opportunity of the legislature to refine that. So those are the two issues. If you have anything about that you want to know more about, I can send you what the league has. But I'll be there, and also at the policy, the Public Safety Policy Committee. And then my last thing is, I'm on the DC 3, which is the Disaster Council for the county, and also the local one. Everybody needs to prepare. We've seen huge hurricane coming our way, not our way, but the way of Florida and much of our Gulf Coast. We've obviously seen what's happened recently with Hurricane Harvey. There are wildfires beyond belief in the western United States right now, more than since 2003. So I just want to make sure everybody knows about ReadyMarin.org, which is the website in Marin County for preparing for disasters. Wildland fire is a huge risk for us right now. So ReadyMarin.org, and also the local one that we've created is NRG, the Neighborhood Response Group, Marin.org, and then also Ready.gov, which is the United States government's FEMA-controlled website to help you prepare for fires, floods, all of those things. There we go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Way. I'll just mention a couple of things, already mentioned the Garbage Franchise Meeting, but since you brought, brought up TAM, and I thought your suggestion of having representatives from TAM come to our council, I'm sorry, to talk about Smart in particular, although it might create an opportunity for them to talk about other matters as well, they're within their scope, but certainly focus on Smart. I did attend, as in my capacity, as a substitute for Councilmember Hillmer, who was unable to attend the last TAM board meeting on August 24th. There was, this actually was, I think, the evening before the official first day of Smart's operations. So there was a lot of goodwill being expressed towards the success of that enterprise, and I'm glad to hear that members of the council have taken advantage of it. I have not yet. The meeting was largely a business meeting. There was some interesting discussion, though, about very preliminary plans to try to reconfigure Route 37 across the top of the bay. There are some various particular challenges associated with that particular roadway, the fixes for which are unclear, except in their respect that they will all take a long time to accomplish and will cost a lot of money. So it was a little stunning to see that presentation and what the, what the alternatives might be, including the potential for a toll road. And now this is a, so these are very preliminary discussions that are occurring right now, but those are some of the things that people are in fact thinking about. And Councilmember Morrison correctly suggested that I note that on Tuesday, September 19th, we will have another event with the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, which has been terrific this year, I think, in the way in which they have developed opportunities for local business to promote them and their introduction to the community through ribbon cuttings and various other events. So on September 19th, the chamber will be hosting a mixer at Hello Gorgeous, which is at 1108 Magnolia Avenue. And we will be, I will be joining folks there, and Ann will be joining folks there as well. I think the chamber has a number of different plans, or for different events coming up, so I will be looking forward myself to participating in as many of those as I possibly can. And that's all that I had for my own report for this evening. And with that, we have one public hearing, Agenda Item 7.1, which is to waive the second reading and adopt the Fire Code amendments. Looking forward to this one, and if we could hear an oral report from the City Manager, that would be great.
Very briefly, for the mayor and councilmembers and members of the public, this is a public hearing for the second reading of an ordinance that you've already waived the first reading previously. Every three years, there's a statewide revision of applicable codes that govern buildings and structures. They're enumerated in the staff report, not least of which is the California Fire Code. When these new codes are published on this three-year cycle, the Marin Fire Agencies get together and they evaluate the changes, and they make an effort to create uniform code changes throughout all the jurisdictions in Marin. This has worked very well in terms of creating a level environment for construction, construction inspection, building inspection, all throughout the county. So this is the result of that three-year cycle effort on the part of our fire agencies, and on behalf of Chief Schertz, I'd request that you waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance.
Okay, any comments or questions from the council? Seeing none, I guess we can open it up to questions from the public. Are there any comments or questions from members of the public on this item? So hearing none, we'll return it back to the council, and I guess we just pretty much need a motion, unless there's any further discussion.
Is there a discussion? I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1016.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is passed.
Excuse me.
Which then will lead us to Agenda Item Number Eight, which are business items. We have two on the agenda this evening, 8.1, which is an update regarding Measure B, the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Services Measure, and Item Number 8.2, which is the, described on the agenda as Local Considerations for the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. So let's start with Agenda Item 8.1 on Measure B.
Mr. Skinner's gonna do the presentation this evening, and I'll chime in a few times, and then we're available for questions. As the council's aware, we've now been assigned the letter B, Measure B for the item that you've placed on the ballot.
Which was unfortunate, because I think we were all hoping it was still gonna be Measure C, but-
Yes, yeah, it was, it's certainly for clarity, it might have been nice, but, you know, you can play with the letter B as you want. I think there's a lot of nice phrases that come out of B, and bettering things. So I'm gonna turn it over to the Public Works Director, Julian Skinner, to give the presentation, and I hope he'll forgive me if I interrupt him a few times.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So we're here tonight to give a update to the community on Measure B, which is scheduled to be on the ballot November 7th of this year. So what is the issue behind this measure? So here in the city, we have just over 32 miles of pavement, and as most people are aware, the condition of that pavement is very poor. The technical analysis of it reveals that it's a 39 on a scale of 0 to 100, but in addition to that technical analysis, we've heard a lot of response from the community about their concern over the condition of the pavement. And in fact, in a community survey earlier this year, it was the top priority expressed among would-be voters was the conditions of the street and fixing the potholes. So despite some past efforts, some local money, the previous Measure C that we've spent on the roads, we still have the worst roads in the Bay Area. And the reality is, as we have done some projects in the past, and we have spent some money on the streets, we would need to accelerate the program that we currently have in order to really take a bite out of our pavement infrastructure and get that rating out of the 40s and up above, so it's comparable with other Bay Area agencies. The other thing in, in making our pavement better is it not only makes a better user experience for everybody, but it actually makes it less expensive to maintain in the long run. So the advantage of accelerating the program and fixing our streets now is it's a better user experience, and in the long run, it makes it less expensive to maintain those And here's just a graphic of how bad is it, so I mentioned we're a 39. There is a scale of 0 to 100 that rates streets, basically the day a street is paved, it would be rated as a 100. If you were to go to a street that had no asphalt, it was all gravel, it would be a 0. So 39 is obviously closer to the 0, we're definitely on the bottom, and we're in that yellow poor area. The goal, what the Metropolitan Transportation Commission says agencies should strive for is at least a 75. That is something that is maintainable. Once you get into the seventies, once you get into that good area, it becomes less expensive to maintain your roads, and again, you have a better, um, user experience. Uh, we're in the poor category, which is second from the bottom. Basically, if we were dropped down to that bottom category, you would be out there counting the areas of good pavement amongst all the potholes. Um, and if we were, if we don't address our pavement conditions sooner rather than laters, sooner rather than later, we'll be slipping down into that red condition, which basically means to fix a street, you have to reconstruct it. Um, so this next slide shows, um, where we could go from here. Um, so this is a five-year projection, looking at a number of different, um, scenarios, uh, starting at the left with where we could be next year, all the way to the right, uh, which is where we could be in five years. So these are some five-year program scenarios, uh, that we ran through, uh, what's called a Street Saver, uh, program. Um, and so what we're measuring here is that PCI number, which is the condition of the street, which today is a thirty-nine out of a hundred. Uh, what this graph looks at is if we spent how much over the next five years, where would that PCI number get to? Um, and so actually, if we flip to the next slide, it's the same thing, but it's blown up a little bit better, it's got some different numbers on it, but this is essentially the same graph, just blown up a little bit for people to see. So the very bottom line, um, shows if we were to do nothing, if we took all of our money and instead of spending on a pavement, uh, directed it elsewhere, where would our PCI number go? And it shows that, um, it would drop down to a thirty-one. So that's the line that's dropping down to the right, that's the do nothing. Um, so the pavement, obviously, if we don't address it, is gonna continue to deteriorate. Um, and again, um, not only is the pavement getting worse, but it's getting more costly to fix. We're pu- pushing the product, the, the problem down the road, and we're adding costs down the road if we wanted to come back and fix it. Um, the middle two that are kind of close to one another, um, that end up, they're basically the horizontal lines, are the, um, existing, uh, funding level that we have today, um, and then also a funding level that would enable us to maintain our, our pavement condition index, uh, where it is today. So, at the current funding level we're at right now, which is about one point five million a year, uh, we would just slightly be dropping in our PCI over time. Uh, would actually take about one point eight million to maintain us at a PCI of, uh, forty-two over time. Um, and then the next lineup, uh, which is just a little bit better, is, is bumping us up by five points. Um, and then the next two, the green and the blue are two scenarios that we had the consultant run, uh, that look at if we had a specific goal in mind that we wanted to get to in five years, what would it cost? Um, and then the numbers at the bottom show, um, what it would take to maintain our network at that level. And so the green, um, is basically getting us to a PCI of sixty. So we're currently a thirty-nine. Um, the green gets us to a sixty over five years. Uh, calculations show it's roughly four million a year to get to that point. Um, the next, uh, goal level would be to get to a seventy in five years. Um, calculations show that's about five million a year, um, to get to a seventy. Uh, the top, uh, or the red one is the ideal scenario per, well, it's not the ideal scenario, it's the ideal scenario for us if money was not an issue. The ideal scenario is we spend all the money tomorrow and fix all of our streets in a year, but that's not practical, so that's why, uh, this top level is what we think would be the most practical if money was not a constraint, is that we would come up with a program to pave all the streets in five years. Um, to get up to eighty-two, which is where MTC, um, says our streets would be in the best condition and would be, uh, less expensive to maintain. That costs about seven and a half million, um, a year over five years to get up to the eighty-two. Um, so what we're looking at here as far as just getting to these levels and how it affects our ongoing maintenance is the horizontal lines, which are basically staying roughly where we are, either funding-wise or PCI-wise, we're spending about one point eight million a year, and our streets would stay in the same condition we are today. Um, if we were able to spend money to accelerate our program, um, to get either up to that sixty or the seventy level, our maintenance costs long-term actually go down, um, to less than a million dollars a year. So, not only would we have better streets and better end, uh, better product for the end user, but we would reduce our ongoing maintenance costs. We would have streets that would be, in the case of the five million a year, at a PCI of seventy, which is in the good category, which is where, um, ideally, MTC would like to see us. And then we're also spending less than a million dollars a year to keep them in that good condition versus spending one point eight million today to keep them in the poor condition, um, they're in today. Um, so a question I often get is why is it so expensive? Surely it does not cost that much to pave a street. So, there's a lot more to paving a street than just the asphalt, um, that goes on top. Um, on some of these streets, we have to dig down a foot and replace material, uh, because the material underneath is not good and there's no structure left to the road, to basically rebuild the road from the bottom up. Um, on some of the better roads, um, that we have, we're able to just take some asphalt off the top and put some, um, uh, replacement asphalt on the top. But, the numbers that we've given in the last chart to show how much it would cost over a certain amount of time are based on the consultant's analysis of our streets, the condition they're in, and then also looking at how much we've been paying, uh, to pave our streets here in Larkspur. And so it's, those numbers are based on, on data that we have here locally. And so an example of this data on how much it actually costs to pave a street is if we take Madrone, uh, which we've paved the first two sections over the last two years, so we have real data, we have real costs for what it's, um, what we've incurred so far in twenty sixteen. Uh, we did a segment that cost just over a hundred thousand, and then this past year, we did, um, a section of about a thousand feet that cost two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, next year, we're scheduled to do, uh, a shorter section, um, and then the next two sections here, the red section that says future and the purple section that says future, are not currently funded in Measure C, but these would be part of a five-year accelerated plan. And so we've projected out, looking at what we spent to date, which is about three hundred and seventy thousand for the third of a mile of Madrone that we have done. If you extrapolate that out over the whole length of Madrone, and actually, Madrone then turning into Wilson Way, so taking this road, uh, Madrone, and then taking the right going up Redwood, but following Madrone to get the longest reach up the canyon, uh, about a mile and a half total, um, and our calculations show that would be about one point five million dollars for that stretch. So, uh, what are we talking about with Measures B? So obviously, we had Measure C, um, which was adopted, um, in twenty thirteen, paved, uh, some streets over the last three years, um, including Magnolia, uh, Larkspur Plaza Drive, Madrone, as I just showed, and then a few, uh, streets up in the Greenberry Hills. Um, but the funding for Measure C is scheduled to expire. Um, and Measure C was not set up to allow us to accelerate a paving program. It was basically set up as a pay-as-you-go, um, meaning the money comes in each year through sales tax, and then we developed a plan where each year we would do an amount of streets that, uh, we could pave with that amount of money. So that's how Measure C, uh, was set up. Uh, what Measure B would do is it extends the Measure C funding at the three-quarter cent rate, but it's structured such that we can accelerate our paving program, that we don't, we're not tied into the pay-as-you-go, uh, format that we've had with, uh, with Measure C.
Julian?
You know, uh, there, there are a lot of people who don't equate accelerate with debt. So I, I think that needs to be explained, because a lot of times we get emails, you see it on Nextdoor, you know, they say, "Well, if you got a million and a half, you know, how are you gonna pay for all this in five years?" You know, even though the, the language is being used as accelerate. So, uh, can you just kind of like give a brief overview, or maybe the city manager can?
Go ahead. Uh, two, two things, and then if you don't mind, this is actually a point I was gonna ask to interrupt Julian for a second, too. Uh, so to answer your, your question, um, to accelerate the program, we're talking about infusing the program with a large amount of money, on the magnitude of twenty-five to thirty million dollars, which is what it'll take to then, over five years, fix everybody's street and get the entire network up to the quality that we're talking about, where maintenance becomes something we can manage and handle with our revenue streams. To do that, we'll need a financing mechanism. Um, what that looks like in terms of debt, structure, what type of actual financing it is, the measure doesn't commit you to that, because there's a lot of different options out there for the council, and they're affected by the markets. And the ideal thing is to wait until we know what the full price tag is, and we can go out into the markets and get the best deal for the taxpayers. And so that's why we've talked about accelerate, but we haven't committed the city to any particular financing mechanism at this time. But, it will, it, we are talking about the city bringing twenty-five to thirty million dollars in, um, as some sort of debt structure and financing structure. I also wanted to interject here. Um, it's often difficult for Julian and me to do these presentations, uh, because in some respects, it makes it focus on the downside to Measure C. And I did want to celebrate for a second that we've fixed roads with Measure C money, and the, and the community and the council should be applauded for making that commitment and giving us that opportunity to fix some roads. Uh, we've learned a lot. We knew going in, we were gonna have challenges on the pay-as-you-go system. We've also learned that no one solution works for every road in Larkspur. We showed you Magnolia, uh, which has the entire breadth of challenges on it. Utilities that are shallower than they say they are on the maps, new sidewalks that need to be built, trees in the middle of the road. Magnolia's a fun road to fix. Uh, they're all interesting in their own way. Some of them have water tables that we've had to deal with. Others have really been beaten down on our hillsides by, by, uh, sun and rain. Uh, and our staff's done a great job of making sure that the right treatment's done for each road. Um, so I want to make sure we all recognize that we've done a lot with Measure C. What we want to make sure folks walk away from this presentation today knowing is that we can't get off that curve of constantly being down at that low PCI of forty and that poor network and spending double what we ought to be spending to maintain our poor quality roads, unless we go out, get this infusion of money, fix everybody's road in five years, uh, and get ourselves to a place where we can maintain the network within our means. And that's what Measure B is about. Uh, so now I'm gonna turn it back to Julian.
Okay. Thank you. So the next slide, um, sums up what the council adopted ballot, uh, question is, um, which is called the Larkspur Essential City Services Measure. Um, so I'm gonna read through this, says to maintain city services, including repairing aging, deteriorating neighborhood streets, roads, potholes, major boulevards, clearing brush to prevent fires, improve emergency vehicle access, upgrading storm drains, fire protection, nine-one-one emergency and medical response, and other services. Shall the city of Larkspur extend the voter-approved sales tax at the three-quarter cent rate until ended by voters, providing one million six hundred and fifty thousand annually, with authority to incur debt to accelerate infrastructure projects subject to citizens' oversight, audits? So that's the official ballot question. And then, moving back to, again, what our pavement goals are and, and what we're striving for here, um, it's not just better roads, it's less maintenance costs over time. Um, so, the chart that's shown at the bottom is something I've, I've probably thrown up here in most of the presentations, it's called the pavement curve, and it's a basic, um, life of, of pavement, um, that as a pavement deteriorates and it starts to crack, um, it exa- the, the wear on that pavement and the condition of the pavement goes downhill very quickly. Um, and so there's a great incentive to perform preventative maintenance on streets and get to streets, uh, when they're in better condition, um, so they're, you're not spending all of that money, uh, fixing streets that are down in the lower twenties. Um, and so that's the theory behind infusing money into the program to getting the streets at a certain level where at the top end of this curve, uh, we can do much less costly treatments to maintain our system. Um, and so, what, what would this look like? So we've said we could fix every street over five years. Um, unfortunately, I can't commit today to which street and which year. Um, if the revenue measure passes, um, then we will be spending the time looking at what that paving program looks like. There's a lot of variables. Um, in that, we obviously have utility partners that we would have to work with. Um, this is another reason why we don't just go out and pave every street in the first year, um, because we have to give those utility companies a chance, uh, to fix, um, their, uh, infrastructure in the streets and work with them in some cases, um, to leverage some of their funds for paving their trenches so that we can make our paving dollars go further. So that will be a process to work out the schedule in conjunction with the utility companies. In addition to that, we want to hear from some of the folks in the neighborhoods, um, that maybe don't want every street in their subdivision paved in one year, uh, because it's gonna create parking issues for them at the time, and maybe they would prefer if we were in and out of that subdivision every other year, or something like that. We definitely want to hear from the community on what they think a paving program would look like. Uh, it's definitely one of the variables. Um, the other is, um, there are definitely diff- different techniques that we're going to employ depending on the nature of the street. Um, as I mentioned before, some of the streets will need to be dug down a foot and completely rebuilt, other ones will simply need new asphalt on top. And so, structuring concrete, uh, structuring contracts, uh, so that we group similar types of construction will be most efficient in the long run. We may go out with one or two contracts that do all of the concrete repairs in one or two years, um, and we may do one that has all of the light overlays in one year versus all of the heavier construction in another. There's just another variable we have to look through and how we're gonna plan that out, and so that's another reason why the financing hasn't been tied down. We don't know exactly how much money we're going to spend each year, we've gotta make it through this paving program, uh, and see how it's best, how it's most efficient to spend our money with all of these, uh, needs. And then the bottom point is something that we've been stressing since the beginning of Measure C, is we have a lot of streets that, when you look at them on that pavement curve, you know if you leave that street for another couple of years, it's gonna get more expensive, it's gonna get to the next level, and you're gonna have to dig it out. So, some of those streets are gonna have to come to the front end of the schedule so that we don't have to pay more for them at the back end of the schedule.
I just wanted to add that I've been telling my counterparts in, say, the sewer district, for example, and I've asked Julian to tell his counterparts, if Measure B passes, we're gonna want to bring you that plan by the end of the fiscal year, so they need to start preparing as well to have these discussions with us. It's not an open-ended, uh, process, takes a long time. Uh, the districts are, are very receptive, they're going through their own five and ten-year planning for their infrastructure, so it's timely for them to work with us. Uh, so I, I think this is a process we'll be able to, to work on quickly, uh, if the measure passes.
So the next slide addresses fiscal accountability. Um, so, um, we will be continuing the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee, uh, which we've had with Measure C. Um, and throughout Measure C, so far, we've spent ninety-four percent of those funds, um, were spent on streets and roads, the other six percent were spent on, uh, fire services and vegetation management for emergency access. Uh, Measure B would continue the audits, um, and the reports that we had with Measure C. Uh, and the council, as, as you're aware, has adopted a policy, uh, to spend no money on pensions or administrator salaries, uh, for Measure B. Um, so the funds, um, are legally required to be used to maintain Larkspur services, they're not subject to takes by the state as other funds such as gas tax maybe. Um, and Measure B can be ended by the voters. Um, so the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee can make a recommendation, um, that the revenue measure is no longer needed, um, and recommend that ending the measure be placed, um, on the ballot. Um, and we found that through the community survey, um, that folks liked the idea of being able to end the measure when it had done what they voted for it to do, um, as opposed to having a fixed term, uh, which today, we can't say whether that fixed term is, is adequate for the needs or not.
I think a clarification's, uh, needed for the last slide. Because once you secure the, the financing, you need to ensure the revenue stream over a term. And I think that needs to be clarified in that last statement.
I, I think I know what you're asking, although I'm, I'm not, yeah. So I think what Vice Mayor Hilmer is, is alluding to is the discussion we've had before, that, um, were the council to vote down after the passage of this measure to incur some sort of financing, uh, then the, uh, voters cannot cause the city to default on whatever it's taken out. And so, if the voters were to end the measure before we had completed paying off whatever we had borrowed, then... then the measure would, the actual provisions of the measure would stay in place until we had made the last payment.
Does that answer your question?
I just think that needs to be clarified repeatedly.
Great question.
Just to clarify to Vice Mayor Hillmer, that's in the independent analysis that'll appear in the ballot material.
Just, just since we disrupted the flow here a little bit, when does the ballot come out?
I'm told that it will be published and begin dropping in the mail at the end of the month. End of September.
Okay, so people will be seeing that.
People start to see it in their mailbox at the very end of September, beginning October.
So the next question we get is can Measure B funds be used for other purposes? So this was structured to address some major priorities that came from the survey that we heard from the public. Number one being the condition of the roads, fixing the potholes. The next two priorities that came from that survey were storm drain, infrastructure upgrades, and then maintaining public safety, 911 services. And the next slide is another question that I get from folks that have heard on the news about gas tax increase, namely SB 1, and some recent news about potential toll increases. And why do we need this money when there's this other money out there? So, and looking at what Larkspur's needs are, we've identified the roughly $5 million a year over five-year need to get our pavement where it needs to be. There's been some big numbers out there about what SB 1 is, but it's statewide. And then it trickles down to MTC, and then it trickles down to Marin, and then it trickles down and we get our portion. The projections for Larkspur's annual allotment of the SB 1 or the additional gas tax is 230,000 per year, which is about 5% of that $5 million need. So don't get me wrong, we'll take it, we can use it. But when we're looking at accelerating our program, it, it's a drop in, in the bucket. So that's the, the SB 1 number. The other fund that's out there is talk, this SB 1 has been passed. The next one is, has not been passed, has not gone to the voters. It's in the preliminary stages, and this is Regional Measure 3, which is a potential toll increase on the seven Bay Area bridges. Funding, from what we've seen to date, for these projects are more likely for the bigger scale projects. Because it's a bridge toll, there has to be a nexus between the use of the bridge and the project. So there is a list of potential projects, including bridge maintenance, connector routes, freeway work. Local pavement rehabilitation is on the list, but it's way, way, way down at the bottom. We would anticipate that we will get practically, in fact, we'll probably get zero money for local pavement money, maintenance out of Regional Measure 3. That doesn't mean there won't be any in Marin. It just means that it will not trickle down to pavement maintenance. So with all these other funds out there, both ones SB 1 that have passed and ones that are being discussed, RM 3, we anticipate the total of that will probably account for about 5% of what our actual needs are.
And I only want to add to remind the council and the community, you don't really get a say on how much money trickles down from SB 1. You don't get a say on how much money trickles down on the gas tax. Those are done by formula of the state, and those formulas are subject to be changed by the state, not us. So I've been watching gas tax dwindle throughout my career. We got a nice bump because of the recent increases. Next year, if we're lucky, we hope to get about a quarter million in gas tax money in addition to the 230,000 from, from SB 1. So you can see, we have these two sums of money that at best amount to 10% of our need that you don't control and, and can't really bank or count on coming in at the amounts that you hope they'll come in.
You know, Regional Measure 1 and 2 were both meant for congestion management projects. Is that the same for RM 3?
It is, but we've seen the preliminary list of projects that MTC seems favorable to for TAM, and they're important projects. They have to do with congestion on our freeways and our intersections. Could bring us great relief on Sir Francis Drake, we hope, but they're not going to go to Larkspur pavement.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to clarify. It's all going to go to
It's going to go big, big projects.
Major projects dealing with congestion on freeways and major arterials, not residential streams.
We'll, we'll hope that it goes at least in part to the 580 interchange.
Okay, so onto the last slide. So this is the link at the top here where we've got some of these previous presentations are available on the city's website at cityoflarkspur.org, Fixing Our Roads, Measure B. That is my direct line to my desk if anybody has any questions about any of the, the pavement information in here. And then just a reminder that November is also the city's municipal election, including city council races. I'm not the person to talk to if you have questions about that. So there is a website here for the county, and then you can also talk to the city clerk if you have any election questions.
So I just also want to add, I've had a couple of folks ask me why we're doing the measure this year. The Measure C expires at the spring of 2019. The reason is that this election, this measure needs to be on the ballot with a city council election. This is the last city council election before the measure, the current measure expires. And that's why we're talking about it now.
I have a question with that. But Dan, Measure B, if it passes, takes place immediately. Is that correct?
It would go into effect on April 1 of next year. Yes, it would supplant the, the last year of Measure C.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council on the staff report? Yes, please.
Julian, Dan, let's go back to Madrone Canyon and how difficult that would be. One thing you didn't mention, Julian, is they're also going to be fixing storm drains, correct? This measure is going to help with that. Quite a bit of storm drains in Madrone?
There is not as much actually in Madrone as some of the other streets because the creek runs parallel to it. So rather than having to run down the street, there's a lot of places where the pipes just punch directly out to the creek. However, in some of the flatter lands, there are storm drains that run the lengths of the streets that are not as close to the creek. But yeah, there are pieces of storm drain here and there and lets that we can't ignore as we go through and pave a street.
So you'd be fixing those too, and more than not are, are in terrible condition, correct? That we know of.
Correct.
Yeah. Dan, what were you going to say?
I was only going to add that I think we could envision quite reasonably that if the measure's generating healthy revenue in a good year, when the economy's up, that it could pay for the accelerated financing. It could contribute significantly, if not fully, pay for the maintenance component of the program and still have some residual. And the community did have interest in seeing some efforts made on 911 response and on storm drain repairs. And the council has definitely signaled that it's looking forward to, although intimidated by the storm drain study we're going to do, to answer your question of just what the condition of our storm drains are. But I think we could envision down the road in healthy, in a healthy economy, working on those problems with the council's direction as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Way, you had a question?
Julian, can, thank you for this comprehensive report. I feel like we've digested a lot of it over the course of the last several meetings. Can you just give us an update on what the current status of the road repair projects that we've been doing this cycle are? I get a lot of phone calls in my neighborhood about the completion of that project.
Right. So we had a paving program this year, which was the third year of the five-year Measure C plan, primarily in the Palm Hill and Heather Gardens area. We did have to defer some of those streets to next year after some coordination with Marin Municipal, who wanted to replace some of their major infrastructure on some of those streets. So Gelotti Construction was the contractor this year. The paving is all complete. They're at the punch list stage essentially now, which means we're identifying any deficiencies in the work, and they're finishing up some of the striping and adjusting the manholes, but the bulk of the, the paving is, is complete other than the five or six streets that we didn't pave and are going to get bumped to next year's project. So next year is year four of five, proposed to be the Riviera Circle area in addition to the streets that we bumped this year. Again, lots of utilities in Riviera Circles, so we're working with Water District and Sewer District that have old infrastructure in there to make sure that they can get their fixes done before we get there. It's just, there was a streets that are similar to Larkspur Plaza Drive, which is one of the ones we give as an example of an expensive street to fix because it's right next to the creek and the ground is saturated. That's year four. And then, as I showed on the slide here, a little piece getting up to the next intersection on Madrone is included next year. And then we've also leveraged some funds with PG&E, much like we did this year. We were able to pave Francis with basically a 50% contribution from PG&E. Next year, they plan to be on Murray if they follow through with that. We'll partner with them and we'll pave Murray as part of next year's program if PG&E end up in that location. And then potentially some other areas on Madrone too that they have plans to go to. And then the fifth year is proposed to be the Hillview neighborhood. And so right now, with what we've spent to date and what we anticipate spending based on what we know about the streets, we have, we will be collecting money in Measure C to get us through that five-year program.
So when do you expect the punch list things to be done? Like the manhole, gaps in the manhole covers and the striping and the pedestrian warning sign that's, that's held up by sandbags and things like that?
So their schedule for completing their work is the end of this week.
Okay.
And then we've already started some of the punch list walks and identification on some of the major issues so that they have some heads up on some of the work they need to do. But until they finish this week, then we go out and then we walk in and identify issues. And then typically, based on what we've seen to date, it takes about a week after that for them to finish it up. So probably two weeks, I would say, until they should be completely wrapped up.
Can I jump in? I realized listening to Julian and talking about some decisions we made this year on the program, this map offers an illustration I want to use for a moment because I think more so than any year since we launched the current program, we were asked about our methodology for how we've been selecting streets under the pay-as-you-go, critical point analysis system. And the council's had the benefit of probably a dozen presentations about critical point analysis, but I know not everyone in the community has. And I can do, I think, if Julian will indulge me and correct me if I, my non-engineering brain messes this up a little bit. But this map's a nice illustration of the challenge we face in a pay-as-you-go system. If you think about it, we started with the yellow segment there on Madrone, and then we did the gold segment. Then we're going to do that first red segment. And then in year four or five on Madrone, ideally, we're going to do the next red segment. Well, after year five, you have to start asking, what's the condition of the yellow segment? And then you have to ask yourself, what's in the best interest of all the taxpayers of Larkspur to go back and make sure deterioration isn't starting on the yellow segment or to keep going into the, into the violet segment, I think that's violet, up on the map? And, and that's what critical point analysis is all about. And it's a very difficult system because it, it forces these difficult choices. We would rather pave everybody's road, but we have, under pay-as-you-go, we have this limited number of dollars. This year was a go-back-and-stop-deterioration year. And so a lot of folks really, I think, understandably struggled with that because they're living on some of our poorer-rated streets. And some of the streets that got attended to this year, they, they send us photographs and said, well, that, why'd you do that street? And the reason is, we, we have to, under pay-as-you-go, make these tough decisions to maximize limited numbers of dollars. Measure B, the strategy, is to accelerate the program, relieve, relieve us of that choice and get everybody's road fixed because we want everybody's road to be fixed. And so I hope that illustrates a little bit what we've been struggling with and what we think Measure B will correct and make, make things better for everyone.
That's helpful. Any other questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Chu, Councilmember Hillmer? Seeing none, let's open it up to any comments or questions from the public. Then if you do, please approach the podium and state your name and where you live. And I'm going to run the clock to make sure everyone's comments are kept to three minutes, please.
Hi, my name is Don Walker, resident of Larkspur. I think I see a fatal flaw in this plan, and this has to do with your retail sales. Retail sales are migrating to the internet. And irrespective of what's going to happen over a period of time, you're going to see retail sales, your, your sales tax base, or drop off and fall. And more particularly, what's going to happen, that businesses that have retails, physical locations are going to die off. You're going to see Sears drop out, you'll probably see Macy's. Now, they're not in our town, but you need to examine where our revenue is coming, from what sales tax source within the town. Otherwise, you're going to be in a situation five years out where you may lose a lot of your retail sales irrespective of the income here. You're going to lose your retail sales, and therefore this plan is not going to work. Or it's going to have a fatal flaw into it. And I wouldn't want to finance you if I thought, if I thought your town was, was going to be in a situation where retail sales were to drop. So I'm just pointing that out to you, that's all.
Need a comment on that?
I, I would, I would, because I think there's a, some response.
So a couple of responses. First, we're not proposing to, if we go down that financing path, we're not proposing to finance to the full capacity of revenue coming into the city to provide some allowance for ebbs and flows in the condition of the economy. And I don't, I agree that no one would finance us to the projected full amount of the sales tax coming in. They would want us to condition so that there's some give for the economy. The other thing is, we actually do quarterly analysis of the base of our sales tax. And so one of the nice things in Larkspur, although we have one of the more modest sales tax bases in the county of Marin, we actually have one of the most stable sales tax bases in the county of Marin. And the reason for that is that if you think about where we're based in terms of the bulk of our sales tax, it's coming out of service industry and grocery areas that are very stable and have survived ebbs and flows in the economy. So I think, provided we use our usual conservative approach, we would be sound in financing against sales tax.
Just to, to elaborate on, I mean, we, we, obviously, we have a, a little bit of a track record with Measure C in terms of our ability to raise money through the sales tax. And some of the trends that were just identified by the speaker, those have been in play now for a number of different years. Have we seen an impact?
Well, so one of the criticisms of me by the Oversight Committee, which was justified, is that I'm too conservative. And so I was only allowing about $900,000 a year in budgeted sales tax revenue to go into the pavement program in the first two years out of concerns about the health of the economy. And as a result, we actually, each year, we brought in about a quarter million more than that. So in the third year, we ended up spending that on pavement. But that's the way I've always approached sales taxes to, and as the council knows, I bring you budgets and I'm probably criticized even by our sales tax consultant for being too conservative about the numbers.
Well, we encourage you to maintain that perspective going forward.
Actually, I did forget another interesting aspect. I don't even need you to prime me about this one, Sky. This is not entirely a CITUS sales tax. This is what's called a transaction and use tax. It's a slightly different section of the state law. And deliverables are taxed as part of this measure. So for example, and I know I teased the mayor about this when he had gotten a car at one point, if you buy a car outside of Larkspur
It wasn't funny, by the way.
If you buy, if you buy goods outside of Larkspur that are delivered in Larkspur, if you buy something like a car outside of Larkspur, if you, the state charges the measure on top of that transaction because that good's being delivered into the city. Or in the case of a vehicle, they're able to track that. So one of the surprises for us, pleasant surprises with Measure C, and I think one of the reasons we were a little too conservative is we had not anticipated that our community seemed to go on a car-buying spree at some point because we actually have that data and we could see all this new car money trickle in. When, when you make an Amazon purchase, our measure's being added to your Amazon purchase, for example. All the major online retailers add this measure in because the state has it programmed in their computer.
Councilmember Chu?
Yeah, I think another characteristic of our sales tax is if you look at the
Yeah, I think another characteristic of our sales tax is, if you look at the top 25 sales tax generators, it's very tight. There isn't, maybe if you look, take Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and, and Bevmo out of the picture, it's pretty interchangeable in that middle range, because our sales tax generators tend to be restaurants, our service, you know, gasoline stations. We've got several of those in our jurisdiction. But nobody, that really dominates such a large percentage that it would have an adverse impact if, you know, their, their sales were to drop. If they went away, it might be a problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Chu. Councilmember Hillmer, any comment, question?
No comment.
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
Three minutes, huh?
Please.
I'm Greg Reber.
I'm the right there. And I have seven questions, but I'll pare that down. Little confused about some of the math. You were, said that you were expecting to get 1.65 per year from 0.75 sales tax.
If you would, please speak into the microphone, so, because we're recording all this.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's okay. That's all right.
But proportionally speaking, with 0.5% getting 1.5, 0.75 should go to 2.25. So, is there an assumption that I'm, or is there an assumption that has changed?
The, do you want me to go to each question, or do you want?
How about you do all the questions?
Yeah, because we're-
I can do that.
Yeah. That might be better than what-
Yeah, then we can respond.
What happens if this doesn't pass? What's Plan B, so to speak? On Slide six, actually, let's stay with this one for a second. Can we go back to this one, to everyone on there on the math, too? This is interesting, because this ratio, this is almost twice as much per foot as that, because this had to go down to dirt and that didn't? Okay, we answered that one quickly. The pension question keeps coming up. What is the mechanism that ensures that this doesn't go to pensions? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get there. Don't worry about it.
I'm writing down.
For, I, I think, Dan, you said, Mr. Schwartz said that the, the taxing would begin if this passes in April 2018, right?
At the new rate, yes.
And the question is, when does we start receiving bucks from it? And also, how much overlap with Measure C would that mean? Would that mean from April to December? Now, if we go to Slide six, that's Slide six, that's Slide six. Yes, I'm a little bit concerned about the 60 or 70. So, if we pave something, that day, it's 100, right? How long does it take to go from 100 to 60? Maybe that was a different slide with the funny curve. Because, and what concerns me is the averaging, because you know what Wilson Way looks like. That will bring the average down. So, if most of the roads are at 100, and Wilson Way's still at negative 5, then, okay, we're at 60, we're good. And most of us up the hill wouldn't be good with that.
We, we got a lot of questions here, so if you could wrap up-
All right, I'm going. I know you guys are writing down, writing down. And the, Slide 11, there was public input on phasing. Hopefully, that means public input on being the squeaky wheel, saying, please do Wilson, and Bohemys, and Hatzik. And the rest of them are notes for myself to go back to next door.
Great. Terrific. So, thank you very much for that, and I think we'll see if we can get some answers to your questions.
Yeah, so, let's see. The first question you had was to explain the projection, because you thought it seemed a little lower than consistent with what we'd done. That's, again, I haven't consistently published the low end of what our tax consultants feel would be generated, rather than publish the high end, because I'd rather we're thinking about and programming conservatively against what's probably going to be a more modest year in the economy. So, they look back at trend data, and they look at the base of our sales tax generators, and then they project a range for us, and they actually give us conservative, neutral, and optimistic projections. And so, we've published the conservative projection, and that's why it's not quite jiving with the recent surge in the economy. I'm going to save "What if it doesn't pass?" until last. That's a great question, but I, it's one that, it takes a little longer. So, then, I think maybe I'll let Julian, the road cost question.
Yeah, so, the different costs, it's, it goes back to one of my points about every street is different, and in this case, every section of Madrone is different. There's different widths that can affect how expensive it is to pave a section of streets. Steeper streets are more expensive than flatter streets. Wider streets are more expensive than narrow streets. In this case, specifically, for the two sections of Madrone, yeah, the first section we did, we did not have to go down to dirt to redo the street. We simply peeled off asphalt and put asphalt back, a, a pretty thick layer still, but we didn't have to go down to dirt. The section we did this year, we had to take the street down, for the most part, down to the dirt, and a lot more asphalt went into that street. So, overall, the cost for that segment is more on a lineal foot basis than the previous section.
And asphalt was more expensive, I believe, right?
Yeah.
So, then, you asked about protection against pensions, and my answer would be the same as protection against all costs. One, you have the council's adopted policy making it clear how they will spend the money. The second thing is, you have the Citizens Oversight Committee, who's, among its jobs is to audit the expenditures and make sure they're consistent with what was promised to the voters. And I can tell you, the current Oversight Committee takes that job very seriously and has regularly pushed back when staff has suggested expenditures they felt were a little a field of, of what was promised to voters. So, if, if we ever suggested to spend anything far afield of what was promised to voters, I would expect them to, to lead a mass into this room and make sure that the council was told that no way, no how should that happen. And ultimately, the voters have the power to hold the city council accountable for the, the use of this money. And then, you asked about, when does the money start to come in? If it goes into effect on April 1? There's roughly a two-month lag from the money at the register to reaching us, is about two months on sales tax. We get sales tax payments every month, but if there's a change in the amount, it's about two months till we would see that trickling in. And then, I think, I'm not the right person to talk about PCI averaging, although I want-
Before you go, there's an overlap between C and B.
So, C would stay in effect until March 31st, and then, the new amount of 2018. There was, won't be an overlap. It'll, Measure B supersedes Measure C.
There was some confusion about that. Not anymore.
And that's, and I believe that's also very clearly stated in the analysis that'll be in the ballot book. Now, Julian, you are a much better person to talk about how PCI's work.
Right. So, I think part of the, first part of the question was, how long does it take a street to get down to a PCI of 60 after you pave it, and it's at 100? So, that depends on a whole bunch of factors, including traffic, the underlying soil, and the amount of water that gets into the street. The idea with an optimized paving program is, you don't let those streets that are 100 get down to 60. So, this is why, as the city manager mentioned, when you do critical point analysis, when that 100 gets down to a 90, you're doing crack sealing, and it bumps that PCI up. When that 90 gets down to an 80, you're putting a seal coat on that street, and you're bumping that 80 up into the high 80s. And you push that life out so that you keep doing treatments to it, and you can push the life down 40 years before you need to actually put new asphalt back on that street. As opposed to if we've just paved a street and left it, and it had a significant amount of traffic on it, it could get down to a 60 in 15 years or so. So, it's all about pavement management. And as far as the numbers that we do report, yes, it is a blended average over the city. So, our goal with the five-year program is that we will touch every street that needs to have maintenance done over the five-year period. The number that's reported to MTC and the numbers that you see from other agencies is a blended average. So, longer streets are weighted more than shorter streets. So, in a scenario where you have a 70 as your PCI average, you could have some streets that are 100. Our goal under that scenario is not to have any streets that are down at the 10s or the 20s, is maybe you have some that are down at the 60s that are pulling that number down to a 70, but not to have any down in the, in the poor category.
Different segmentation, what is the cost of those?
There's three different segments up there, and I don't believe any of them are higher than 10.
Just for the, since that, for the benefit of those who couldn't hear that, the question was, what are the ratings of the PCI on Wilson Way? And the answer is, they're, they're around 10, so, they're pretty bad.
I heard a lot of those.
Yeah. Let, yeah. And what, what more questions do we have on the list to be, to be answered?
Well, I save Measure B. The only other comment is, we'll certainly allow, all the lobbying folks want to have their streets done first, but we do have a methodology. I, I do suspect, though, that if Measure B passes, one of the discussions will be, how do we deal with the hillside area over here, which does have a number of streets that have reached below poor to fail? And so, I think that will be one of our early conversations. I'm not promising you're first on the list, because the other question that I want to remind folks is, we pave a road, and no one's supposed to cut that road for five years. And so, we don't want to go pave a road before folks have had a chance to talk to the sewer agency about their laterals. We don't want to pave a road and then find out that Marin Municipal Water District plans on putting a pipe in there next year, because then, the taxpayers paid for that road to be cut and repaved, and that's not a good use of taxpayer money. So, part of our plan will be to collect all this information and prioritize the roads, but recognize all these other things that are going on. But I know Wilson Way will be there the whole time telling me, and Bolemus, and Piedmont, and Upper Ardmore.
I don't care about that.
Yeah. We, I don't, I really don't want to extend this.
I'd like to get an answer. What, well, where will the money come from to fix those if this doesn't happen?
No, that's, I think we're still waiting for that one.
That's the last question. Last question. That's okay. So, I saved that one for last. You asked us, what if Measure B does not pass?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what phase does it just answer?
That was the, the phasing and lobbying the staff for, for when your road can get paved, if it passes. So, if Measure B doesn't pass, we'll continue with the current methodology, and we will continue with the current pay-as-you-go approach. But the program, after, after fiscal year 1819, will be relying solely on gas tax, solely on SB 1, if it's still in existence, solely on vehicle impact fees that you charge. So, at best, the program will have a funding level of $900,000 to $1 million in a good year, and probably less in many years. So, we're already struggling to, to stay afloat with the current pay-as-you-go methodology that's infused with Measure C. We will definitely be struggling to stay with our head barely above water if Measure B doesn't pass. We won't stop paving roads, but we'll be paving a lot fewer of them, and we'll have to be even more selective in which ones we're paving.
Okay. Thank you. So, is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment or question? Please state your name and where you live, please.
My name is Pablo Belara. I live on Upper Ardmore Road. It seems like a really tricky calculation to get the five-year period of sales tax to match up with the cost of the road repair. So, you've got to deal with sales tax, what it's garnering, okay, goods are going to get more expensive, there might be more money coming in that way at the same time. Prices are going up, so I guess all of these things are, have been taken into consideration, and hopefully, it all works out. I'm just wondering what the hopes of my street getting paved are. Upper Ardmore Road is atrocious. It is dangerous. It's steep, it, it needs a total redo. We were cruelly dealt with when the neighborhood was paved, because Ardmore Road was paved, Wiltshire was paved, the upper portion, all of Marina Vista, but it stopped right at Upper Ardmore. And I was here with my neighbor to appeal to the council and your, your predecessor, Julian, to pave our road while the equipment was there. There's got to be efficiency in keeping that, using that equipment when it's in, in, in the neighborhood. At any rate, we're, we're now in a situation where we're a relatively isolated road that serves eight homes, and I, I can, I can imagine priorities based on traffic, and so, we can't claim to have a lot of traffic. All we can claim is that we've got a terrible road. I wish it looked as good as Wilson Avenue does right now. So, what kind of, what kind of hope can you give me that, that within five years, that this road would be redone?
Mr. Mayor, I don't- Anything, anything further? Sir?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Is there anything further to your comment?
No.
Okay, good. Thank you very much for that.
Clarification, Mr. Mayor, that the speaker used the phrase, when he began speaking, the five-year period of the sales tax. I want to make sure that we're not confusing what's being proposed as a, a, a project with the term necessary to fund the project.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, is there a question there? I'm not, or just a comment?
I would like staff to clarify for the speaker that the phrase "five-year period of the sales tax" may not accurately describe.
Okay. So, the five-year period being discussed is, that's our estimate of how long it would take to work on every road that needs to be worked on in Larkspur, to touch every road, get every road up to appropriate quality, including the Wilson Ways and the Upper Ardmore. And so, that's when we're talking about five years, what we're talking about. How long the tax needs to be in effect to accomplish that will depend on the cost when we do the project and the financing mechanism that we ultimately obtain, because we'll need to pay that money back, and so, the tax will be in effect for that period. And that will be a much longer period than, than five years to pay it, pay it off. So, you know, I think one of the reasons that we found when we did our community survey and when we've talked to folks about these options is that if you say the terms so many number of years, you may actually make it impossible to reach this goal, because you don't know what those different variables are going to produce when you go out to accomplish them. And we all have seen many government agencies promise to a certain thing in a certain number of years and then fall short, particularly when they're doing sales tax financing. And that's why putting the power in the hands of the voters to end the tax, once the goal is accomplished and paid off, is the way Measure B is structured. It's to allow the flexibility to actually get the job done, so that a resident of Upper Ardmore doesn't have to be afraid that his street won't get paved, because we want everybody's street to get fixed. And I said pave there, but it could be fixed. Upper Ardmore's probably a street where fixed is the right word. And I'm not asking for sympathy, I can only tell the residents of Upper Ardmore that for the staff, that's a very painful aspect of applying critical point management for us, to know that we're going to shut that equipment off and not pave that segment with eight homes on it. And that's the downside. Upper Ardmore probably is the poster child for the pay-as-you-goes problem, is that you stop the equipment and don't turn up that street with eight homes. We don't want to do that, and that's why we developed this strategy, and that's why we're talking to the community.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to make a comment at this time? Please, approach the podium, state your name and where you live.
Matt Petrie, 15 Highland Court. Wanted you to clarify, a number of times you've commented that every street will get paved. How do you define every? Does that literally- Does that literally mean every street that has some deterioration, or is there some qualifying criteria? If there is a criteria, I think you need to be very clear with the voters what that is, so that you don't end up with people having expectations that their road's going to get fixed because they heard every road, and then it doesn't. And then there was an earlier question about pensions. I would just encourage the mayor and the city council that money that is going to pensions today is detracting from what could be put toward roads, and while we've made some progress at the county and the state level on pension reform, we need to continue that, because as long as that money is going to those things, it's not going to be able to go to essential services. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that. There was two, two aspects to that, and let me just make a comment on the second aspect of it. From my own perspective, and I think this is a view probably shared by everybody else on the council, we are very, very mindful of our fiduciary obligations to the community in a variety of different respects, and I think we've done a good job in, in respecting those obligations when it has come to the expenditure of funds for Measure C over the last several years. We're also very mindful of our other fiduciary obligations, and those include pensions. And finding the right balance is something that we need to do on an ongoing basis. We have a terrific city staff that helps us do that, but we do take these obligations, all of them, very, very seriously, and we will continue to do so as Measure B hopefully is approved and implemented going forward into the future. So, I think I know the answer to your first question, and that has to do with this slide overall, I believe, but I'll turn it back to staff to answer it.
Yeah, well, first, if I could, if you'll indulge me in one additional comment, I thought it'd be good, I'd like to applaud the council, because it's been a while since we've talked about pension reform in Larkspur, but this council was one of the earlier adopters in Marin County of most of the pension reform movement that swept around the state. I think we all agree there's more to be done, but not only did you do all the things many of the other agencies do, I believe you were one of the last agencies in the state to take the classic formula and lower it to the, to the minimum for miscellaneous employees right before the deadline where you weren't allowed to do that anymore. And so, we have followed all those patterns. We've done all the pension reform we can. I do agree, more can be done. A lot of it needs to be done at the state. I think there's many recordings of me on the website ranting about the state needing to step up and do something. Now, on the second question of talking about fixing the roads, we, there is no one solution for each road. Some roads only need a treatment on the surface to, to be a quality road that we can maintain. Some roads, like Wilson Way, are going to have to be ground down and built from scratch. Some roads, we've learned we can pulverize the existing material and then build new material on top of it. We've gotten very smart on how to fix roads, but we've also learned it's difficult to say, use this terminology and have it apply everywhere, because some folks are going to get full rebuild, some folks are going to get pavement, some folks are going, I'm going to get too technical here, but some folks are going to get this treatment called a Cape Seal, you know, and they all work, and, and I applaud our engineering staff, because they work hard to make sure we're maximizing the taxpayer dollar by doing the right treatment for each road.
Just to, just to, because I thought you were actually going to go a little bit different direction on, on that point, and that's the reason I alluded to, to this particular slide, because right now we've got a PCI, we're at a PCI index overall within the city of Larkspur, which is pretty much in the tank. Our, our neighboring communities, by and large, are at a much higher level. So, maybe part of the answer to the question here is, what is our overall goal in terms of where we want to be on the PCI index once we've gotten the work done?
So, the, the goal overall per MTC, who have looked at the Street Saver Program that analyzes the condition of your streets and the cost of maintaining them in the future, is seventy-five is the ideal target. Now, once you get into that seventies band is when you really start to realize some of the less expensive treatments as options for maintaining your infrastructure, and so that's why when we asked our consultant to come up with some plans, we set seventy as what we thought our target should be for the long-term health of, of our infrastructure. As far as what does that mean over the next five years, it certainly does not mean taking every street in, in Larkspur and grinding it down and repaving it. That's, that's not how we get to a seventy. We get to a seventy by doing some less costly treatments on some of the streets that maybe we paved a few years ago, so that rather than those streets dropping down, they stay up in the nineties. And so, it's, it's more of a blend, and so what we will be looking to do with getting to the seventy is we will address the paving need of every street in Larkspur over the next five years. Given that we paved, we started this latest paving program a few years ago, by the time we get through a five-year program, some of those streets will be eight years. They'll be good candidates for some crack sealing or from some lighter surface treatments like a Cape Seal. So, those streets will likely get addressed if the need arises in the eight years. So, basically, the five-year plan would touch every street that hasn't been touched and would even touch some of those that have been touched in the last three years if it was the most cost-effective thing for the long-term overall health of, of our street network.
And overall raise the average quality of our streets and roads within the city of Larkspur to be more in line with what we see around Marin generally.
Yeah, and the, and the goal is that that seventy is not an average where we have a whole bunch of hundreds and some down in the fifties. We don't want to have any streets down in the fifties. We want to be setting a, setting a, a low point where we've got streets that we don't have to reconstruct anymore. Reconstructing a street is the most costly way to rehabilitate pavement. You want to be doing those thin overlays and the lighter treatments, so we're definitely going to be doing some of those worst-first streets early on, and those worst, worst-first streets will all get addressed in the five, five-year plan.
I think another way to put it on this slide is really critical, is we want to fix all the streets to cut our annual maintenance costs in half in perpetuity. And so, when you think about the savings to our community and our taxpayers to cut our maintenance costs in half in perpetuity through this investment, you see how this will pay off for the community, and we will all enjoy better roads as we drive around town.
Okay. Anyone else from the public like to offer a comment? See, oop, one more?
There's one issue that has not been thoroughly discussed or adequately explained by the city council, and that is the requirements of the municipal financing. There's a lot of scuttlebutt on next door, that the funds achieved from the financing will be used for all sorts of other things, like the library, like parks, like whatever happens that is not related to the roads. And I think that's because the ordinance and the ballot measure contains a couple of little phrases, such as "and other services." And I was wondering, does the financing institution care whether the monies received from them are put into a restricted fund for roadways only, or does the financing institution prefer that the monies be put into the general fund, because it does give the city more flexibility, and I would see that as an advantage? So, I'm just kind of curious about these details.
No, that's, that's a good question, and I think it has to do, or the answer has to do in part with the way that the, the tax overall is structured, but from a policy point of view, on the city council's behalf, you know, it, it, again, it goes back to my comment a moment ago about fiduciary obligations and responsibilities that we have, and our job is to make sure that the money that is raised from this tax is spent in accordance with the wishes and desires of our community, and I can assure you that will happen, but the more technical answer, I'll.
The more technical answer is that the vast majority, if not all, of financing mechanisms available to us where we're securing the financing against a revenue stream and not assets, because we wouldn't be securing this against property, for example, securing it against the sales tax revenue stream, the financing, they're going to want to know exactly what we plan to do with the money. So, yes, we'll have to be very clear, and essentially, we'll, in some respects, that's the greatest security for the taxpayer, is the, the binding of the money to that mechanism will lock it in place for the duration of the, of the project and the payoff.
Anyone else from the public would like to offer a comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Is there anything further from the council on this? This is not an action item. We're just here to receive the, receive the report and provide feedback. Anything further from the council? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, I, I think there's still some additional clarity that I think some members of the public may have about not having a specific term on, on, on the sales tax. And it ties in with Greg's question about what happens if it doesn't pass, Measure B doesn't pass. Sales tax has a, an additional two percent addition above the state's base sales tax rate that can be used for other local projects. So, if Larkspur locks in three-quarters of a percent and we, it doesn't pass, and other agencies at the county level or, or special districts like Smart, I'm not saying Smart's going to go back for financing, but that goes more than just one county, you know, anyone who adds a sales tax is going to chip in to that two percent. So, if we have to come back in two years, there may not be three-quarters of a percent left. Okay, the second thing is that aside from what the city manager has mentioned about needing the flexibility, you know, I've come to my own personal terms, knowing that if the citizens were to decide on when they want to rescind the sales tax, that Larkspur has that three-quarters of a percent locked in for something that they can do in the future, rather than to automatically release it back so that another agency can use it for something else. So, we know that this amount is always going to come to the city of Larkspur. As far as pensions go, Matt, you know that I worked on the Pension Reform Committee for the Mayor's Council Members Group from Marin. I didn't say anything earlier to the council, because it's a little, it's not premature, but I submitted the proposal yesterday to resurrect that committee to study the other half, which is the other post-employment benefits. So, hopefully, we'll get an approval on that at the end of September and begin work on that in October.
Anything else from the council? Seeing none, I think we are finished, and we will accept the staff report.
Thank you, guys.
And that will take us to agenda item eight point two, the cannabis law. So, I think we're here to receive a report and provide direction back to staff in preparation for a future public hearing and a potential ordinance.
While Mr. Toth's making his way up, Mr. Mayor, council members, I see he's, he's emerging now.
Yep.
He's making an entrance.
He is making an entrance.
Yeah, there wasn't any music. So, the council recall that in February you had a discussion about the passage of Prop. sixty-four, which authorized marijuana use under certain rules and regulations, and authorized marijuana sale under certain rules and regulations. And as the staff highlighted for you at that time, there's a sort of deadline looming, January first of twenty eighteen, because the state is working now to put its rules and regulations in place, and a municipality such as Larkspur needs to decide within the realm of what's optional for a city to regulate, if you want to do so, or whether you want to subject yourself just to whatever the state law and state regulations are. And so, your discussion in February was to sort of highlight what these different issues were and what the different areas you might regulate are. Since you had that discussion, Senate Bill ninety-four passed, which attempted to consolidate issues around the legalization of recreational marijuana use and sale and, and products related to it, and medicinal marijuana. And so, because we like acronyms, and I'm not sure how the, Neil, do you know how the states decided to pronounce that acronym? So, the Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation Safety Act is essentially what Senate Bill ninety-four is, and so it's now presented you with the opportunity to face the same questions, recognizing that you're talking not only about recreational, but also medicinal use. And you may want to carve them back out, you may want to keep them together. The states just made this effort to provide some guidelines and guidance by consolidating under the One Act. We've presented you with a staff report that revisited some of the topics you discussed in February. What we did for purposes of moving the discussion along is we presented our staff recommendations, recognizing that this is a discussion item for you to provide feedback and direction. The council needs to make a decision tonight, as, and Mr. Toth can take you through his presentation shortly, about what those different decisions are, as to what sort of ordinance you'd like staff to craft if you are going to hold a public hearing to enact local regulation pursuant to this act. You do have another option, that's referenced briefly at the end of the report, which is to, to, if you're not prepared to make these decisions, you can pass an urgency ordinance to continue to prohibit these activities and essentially give yourself more time past the January one deadline. Now, urgency ordinances have their own timelines and stipulations tied to them, and if we head down that path, you'll probably get some feedback from Mr. Woodruff about what an urgency ordinance means. But for staff, it would be helpful tonight to at least walk through the different issues that we've highlighted and some of the recommendations and thought process we have as to, to what you might consider, and then turn it over to you and the members of the community president to, to discuss. So, oh, we just lost our, there we go. All right. So, Neil, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay. With that, I'll just quickly go through a little bit of the background for people in the audience who maybe did not see the first discussion on this. The California Legislature adopted the Medical Cannabis and Safety Act, MRSA, in two thousand fifteen, and that was to clarify regulations and procedures for the voters to accommodate the voters' passage of Proposition two fifteen many years before legalizing medical marijuana. Last year, the voters approved Proposition sixty-four with, which is the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. That was supported by sixty-seven percent of Larkspur voters. Since our discussion earlier this year, the legislators passed additional SB ninety-four, Senate Bill ninety-four, to essentially integrate and consolidate the regulatory procedures for both medical and recreational marijuana. In terms of current regulation or the, the, these laws, personal cultivation is now permitted up to sixty-six plants, excuse me, not sixty-six, six plants allowed per resident, residents for personal cultivation. It must be locked and secured and not visible to the public. Outdoor cultivation may either be permitted, regulated, or prohibited by the city or local jurisdiction. However, the city may only permit or reasonably regulate indoor cultivation and cannot prohibit indoor cultivation. In the previous discussion on this matter, the council did seem inclined to not want to regulate indoor cultivation through any special permits. In terms of commercial operations, the, the state permits, will be permitting up to nineteen categories of licenses, and it is anticipated they will begin licensing in January. It appears the state is being rather aggressive in trying to meet that timetable to begin licensing various types of businesses, cultivating. to begin licensing various types of businesses, cultivation, processing, testing, warehousing, distribution, and retail sales. In terms of commercial operations, local agencies may permit, regulate, or prohibit any of these commercial operations. However, the law does not recognize permissive zoning. Businesses are not required to prove local permission, and therefore, local agencies must act to regulate or prohibit, and in fact, inform the state of whether or not we do allow or regulate or actually prohibit these types of commercial uses through our zoning or other ordinances. In terms of transportation and delivery, local agencies cannot prohibit through transportation on roadways. However, it appears the local agencies can regulate or prohibit delivery into the jurisdiction. However, it is fairly impractical to attempt to prohibit or regulate that to a great degree, and the council did not seem particularly disposed to restrict or regulate deliveries from outside the city into the city. In terms of commercial activities, state taxation will begin on January 1st for licensed businesses, and that will include a 15% excise tax and a cultivation tax. There is no sales or use tax allowed for medical marijuana. Local agencies can apply permitting and inspection fees and business licensing fees. However, for any special excise tax, that does require voter approval. But the law does allow for local municipalities to adopt excise taxes for non-medical marijuana. So currently, through all this period, the city has maintained a prohibition on all medical marijuana-related businesses. So, in our staff report, we've identified five issue topics. And I think maybe the best way to approach this is, if the council is so inclined, is just to start with kind of an issue, we could either go issue by issue, or I could run through all five issues, and then you could go back and revisit.
Yeah, that, I was going to ask the council what their preference would be on that, take it at issue at a time, or have you give your summary and then go back?
I can, I, yeah.
I might encourage you to let Mr. Toth finish the presentation, because I think the public comment will be awkward if we don't.
All right, fair enough.
They cover a lot of various topics. Okay, so in terms of, the first issue we addressed is personal outdoor cultivation. And again, the city can regulate or prohibit that. In the previous discussion, the council was a bit mixed on which direction to go. We've identified three kind of options, from really the most permissive, under the state law, to the more restrictive. So beginning, you know, our first option is just to really permit it in a way where it is securely locked, as required by state law, and it's not visible from a public street, public right-of-way, park, or school. In this case, plants can be visible from adjacent private property. And odor regulations are optional, of course, that just adds to a challenge if there's any regulations over odor involved. Another option, in an attempt to try to minimize the impact, is to permit outdoor cultivation, provided it's not visible from a public street, right-of-way, school, or park property, but also from any adjacent property, and that it does not permit a detectable odor. So this is a measure to try to really implement standards that minimize the appearance or impact to neighboring properties. And then, the most restrictive approach would be to simply prohibit all personal outdoor cultivation on private property. Now, the city's ability to regulate issues such as security, visibility, and odors, particularly as sensitivity to odors vary, will be difficult. We would recommend prohibition of outdoor cultivation, given the small lot sizes and fairly dense neighborhoods throughout the city that make up the bulk of Larkspur. In this case, enforcement of prohibition would be complaint-driven, meaning that the city would not exercise or actively seek violations. We would also note, if the city council chooses to permit outdoor cultivation, the council could consider that the more permissive option, where invisibility from public places remains the only test, rather than visibilities, would be a more straightforward approach for enforcement.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Make sure.
Yeah, we just want to create an opportunity, if members of the council have questions that seek clarification.
Sure.
Point that you're making, I'd like to give that.
Sure.
Opportunity to folks, but I want to keep the discussion to after your presentation.
Okay.
Did you have a?
Well, we're done with issue, the first issue, so our recommendation is prohibition of outdoor growing, but...
So if we do, if it does pass and we do have a violation, what does that mean exactly? What would be a violation, something that we would have to create, or?
It would, we would create a, in our code, we would actually prohibit outdoor growing of marijuana, so it would become a municipal code violation enforceable through the police or local.
No, I understand, but if it was, if we, if it was passed, we'll say, and then neighbors complain about the odor, who?
You mean, if it was permitted?
Yes.
Okay. And if what was permitted exactly?
So the odor, which, these plants get quite large, correct? And so there's an odor, and neighbors start to complain. Is that the police that would be called to give the violation? And just give the example of how it continues with?
How would you enforce this?
Thank you.
Well, if the regulate, if we actually regulate to say that it shouldn't be detectable, then we would probably, it would either be on staff or the police to come out and make a determination on that.
Maybe I jump in here. Okay, you're talking about creating a nuisance definition in the ordinance. As you know, we struggle with enforcing nuisances. We have two options, we can send police officers out to enforce nuisances, whether they're issuing a citation for a nuisance, or it's an infraction and there's some penalty involved. Or we could have a code enforcement officer, whether that's an existing staff person empowered to go out and issue the citation, or we decide this is a big enough issue to hire somebody for that purpose. That's the same challenge we're dealing with, with all our nuisance abatement.
Same thing with the leaf blower ordinance, quite.
And here, a question, Neil.
Again, any other questions seeking clarification on the presentation?
On outdoor?
Yes, is it limited to number of plants, like the indoor is six? Is this limited by law? Because it doesn't say in here, is it, what number of plants?
They're both limited to six.
To six, okay, thank you, that's all.
So one residence has six outdoors and six indoor?
I don't, only on the property.
The total is six?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, the second issue we're addressing is personal indoor cultivation. We did identify that the city can regulate or, but cannot prohibit, or simply passively allow, and that is being subject to compliance with fire and building codes. This seemed to be the previous direction of the council, was to not require a special permitting for indoor regulation. Any questions on that?
No.
Our third issue is commercial cultivation. We've indicated, in our discussions with industry representatives, they did not feel Larkspur really provided a, the kind of land value and scale that makes commercial cultivation highly viable. We don't have an agricultural land designation and/or true warehousing district in Larkspur. And really, commercial cultivation is a very different animal than most of the other commercial uses, being agricultural. And so, it's our recommendation, it doesn't truly fit in the zoning categories, and it's probably simplest to prohibit commercial cultivation. And I think that seemed to be the agreement of the council in our prior discussion. Our fourth issue is commercial deliveries by businesses not located in Larkspur. As we noted, the council really did not seem disposed to restrict or regulate deliveries from outside the city. And we do note that we can require business licenses. There is a one yearly license fee for those businesses. I've already had inquiries, so I think many businesses that do get licensed will actually follow the proper procedures and may in fact pay some shared sales taxes. So there might be some revenues generated there. So our fifth issue is regulation of marijuana-based businesses. And in addressing this issue, we've identified a number of constraints. One has to realize this is, becomes a zoning issue. And also, state law has certain constraints to these businesses as well. One of the major constraints is state law requires a 600-foot buffer from schools, youth, and/or daycare centers. And this is to the property. And you'll see maps where we've shown this buffer. Another buffer is a six, potentially 600-foot buffer from parks. In past practices, many cities have adopted buffers from park areas and playgrounds as a way of minimizing the impact of medical marijuana. So we know this is certainly an option available to the council, should you entertain allowing any marijuana-based businesses. Other issues, of course, are zoning regulations. The business, whether it's retail or more industrial, it has to fit into the type of zoning classification. We also have constraints due to our circulation assessment permits related to traffic and as well as parking requirements. A new retail store can have a higher parking requirement than what was previously maybe an office or something like that. So these are all constraints that can apply. In discussing, again, the types of businesses most likely to fit within the city, we've identified three basic categories, retail sales facilities, which would be most appropriate in our commercial C2 zone, and light industrial zoning districts. These are, have some sites that are outside of the buffers. Other, another business would be small-scale commercial production and/or potentially testing. This could be appropriate within the light industrial L1 zoning district. And delivery-only services. We've had discussions with Danielle O'Leary, who's the Economic Development Director over at, in Santa Fel. She's been very involved in this subject, and she's indicated many of these delivery-only services can operate out of offices or light industrial areas with very limited exposure or visibility.
Neil, I have a question about the circulation assessment and parking requirements. Is there data available on that in reference to dispensaries that are for, been in use for medical marijuana? How many vehicles that they have approaching and how, what their traffic, what their parking needs and demands are for that type of a business? Is there data that's available for that yet?
Well, I haven't seen any myself. I think data could be worked up, and in fact, in our process, we can require that you go out and actually develop data in order to make a traffic analysis. Of course, this is all, you know, fairly new sort of activities, but I haven't seen that data, but I think, you know, it's going to vary. But as with any circulation assessment permit, we can require them to actually generate some data based on a reasonable model.
Just wanted, because in different jurisdictions, let's say, has a medical dispensary in Los Angeles, let's say, and they, is there data collected as to how many trip, vehicle trips there are per day that go to that facility? Just didn't know if that was available in other jurisdictions.
Yeah, I haven't pursued it. We haven't talked with our traffic about this particular issue at this point. But I did want to bring it up, because I think recognizing a very busy or successful facility could generate traffic, and particularly north of the creek, that can become an issue.
Any other clarifying questions?
Okay. So, if we look at the maps and you have a copy in front of you, the first graphic shows the 600-foot buffer from schools. And we've identified and read the various commercial, and in fact, this is both commercial and office areas. And then down across the highway below the, below Cordoba Dairy Creek, you'll see in purple is the light industrial zone. So this gives you an idea of some of the areas that, or at least where the buffers begin to touch into areas that could potentially house uses that either would accommodate retail or some form of delivery or production. Going to the next map, we've overlaid that with a 600-foot buffer from parks. These are all the parks in the city. And this begins to constrain and limit the potential areas a bit more, particularly around South Aliso Boulevard and the Bonner Bridge. Now, we did note in the staff report is, again, this would be a local regulation. So if the council sought to expand the area somewhat, you could look to exempt those parks that are more passive, like Greenways, or parks that don't have playground facilities or active recreation or sports. So we had identified some of those parks. And if you go to the next map, you'll actually see, without the buffers, to kind of clean it up, the remaining sites that would be eligible for some form, whether it's, whether these are the commercial sites or the industrial sites or office sites, that could accommodate a use. And in this map, we've actually excluded the five, the buffer from the five sort of passive parks. So that's what that map shows.
So maybe for the benefit of the council, the public, the analysis gets you to this map, and the purpose of this map is to show you properties that would not be eliminated by these various buffers and restrictions that either are in law or you might impose locally and that we would recommend. And so, it's not to say there will be businesses located on the sites that are still highlighted, it's to say that they would not have been eliminated by this criteria, these criteria. And if a business came in and could propose a way to be compliant with the zoning for the property in question, then they could potentially locate a marijuana-based business in one of these areas. This is the map, we thought you probably needed to facilitate your conversation, because this is the map that says, these are the parts of towns and the general properties that you're talking about if you open them up to any level of marijuana-based business.
And just to, just so I understand, because I'm finding the maps a little confusing. So it's the, it's, what is the color?
On this map, you're most interested in that sort of salmon pink that's labeled "commercial", and that sort of pinkish-purple that's labeled "industrial". Those are your properties that are not excluded by the various criteria.
So it's those two colors that we care about?
Those are your two colors to be looking at on the map and say, tonight, if I were to be permissive in some of these businesses, commercial activity, I'm potentially authorizing it to occur at these locations.
And that's to include the 600-foot school, 600-foot park, but not our buffer Greenways at this point?
Right, not the passive parks.
So it's essentially really East Green Bray and parts of Larkspur Landing, essentially is what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I think if I was in your seat and I was trying to capture this in a simple statement, what those five parks mean really practically, that it's whether or not there'd be any activity on South Aliso near the hospital.
I see.
Because there's two passive parks over there that you'd be hard pressed to see a child in, to be honest. Hamilton Park, a lot of folks barely realize it's a park. If, in fact, I wouldn't be shocked if we have staff people who don't realize it's a park. park. And so that's one that we thought might be one you might exempt. And so those properties on South Aliseo, if you don't exempt those parks, then they would be within the buffer of Hamilton Park.
That's the yellow.
Yeah, Hamilton, Bonner, Bonner Landing was, there's a third word now. And then I'm not even sure if Councilmember Morrison's aware that the green belt buffers outside her neighborhood are actually parks. I know a lot of residents are surprised when I tell them that. And then we have a green belt buffer here in the edge of our downtown. And then there's Remellard Park, which is the Marshland Park out in Larkspur Landing.
And I should, I should clarify, too, that I've been looking at these maps so long, it kind of got past me that from a land designation, from a general plan land designation and zoning point of view, the red is representing both office designation and commercial. And there is some difference there because retail would fit more and commercial is not going to fit in office. And so the retail is really limited to the parcels up off next to Bonner Shopping Center on Easter Francis Drake, and then there is really two retail properties on the south end of Bonner Bridge that are purely retail. And those are, those are actually, those two properties have currently have medical uses on them. That's the.
So like, that's Corbets?
It's across from Corbets. Corbets itself is office, but across from Corbets is actually C2.
Yeah, those are, yeah, those, okay. But it's, that side is identical.
Yes. And then the remaining, all the remaining red is office.
So it might actually, not for now, obviously, the next iteration might be helpful to provide that additional level of detail.
Yeah. That should have been more clearly broken out there.
And for, one other question is, and for the last 20 years of medical use of marijuana, we have had deliveries within Larkspur's jurisdiction?
Well.
If you say so. I mean, we don't know.
No, I mean, we've had 20 years of, that we know of. Okay.
We have no idea.
We have no idea. We have no.
As a city, we don't know the answer.
Okay. We've not had any tracking of that or?
If you have personal knowledge, you want to offer into the record about it. Sorry, couldn't resist.
I would just say anecdotally is that I think delivery has become more on the radar in the last few years as more of an above-ground business activity.
Yes, it has, yeah.
I think we'd be naive to say it hasn't happened.
Yeah, no, no, well, I can count 10, I can count 10 people who have regular deliveries.
And also, just for the mayor's and the council's benefit, when we go to public hearing, we'd be far more specific, but for the level of discussion tonight.
Yeah, and that's why I said it's fine for now, but that is an important distinction between where, you know, it's going to be sold and whether it's going to be more suitable for an office setting.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're on page, what page are we on?
Oh, and just continuing on this issue, just quickly, we reviewed with San and Selmo and some industry people who I think were enthusiastic that a retail location in Larkspur could possibly generate up to $1 million, between $80,000 to $1 million in sales a year. Based on that, we recover about 10% or, excuse me, 1% or $10,000 in sales tax. If the city adopted an excise tax somewhere between 4% to 6%, which is considered kind of a reasonable approach, that would generate from 40,000 to $60,000. As was noted in the staff report, we don't know, we really don't know what the cost will be to, you know, for enforcement, any additional police costs or cost to the city, staffing in terms of processing enforcement and oversight. As noted in the staff report, it would take about $2.5 million in sales to support an additional police officer for the CNPA. Additionally, it's been, it is our recommendation, kind of based on information we've gotten from the industry, from other jurisdictions, and kind of the layout of our town, that if the council is inclined to allow some form of marijuana-related business or commercial activity, we would recommend prohibiting onsite retail to the general public and allowing commercial production for business-to-business sales and delivery-only operations. These could be conducted in the more, you know, more visible commercial activities might be viable on the east side of Highway 101 in areas not frequented by the general public. And while less visible commercial activity might take place in office spots, different spots throughout Larkspur. We also note in terms of medical marijuana, it is possible, we've seen that we could clarify the definition of dispensaries to exempt licensed pharmacies and medically licensed care facilities from the definition. So things like residential care and hospice could actually administer the drugs. The city would not take oversight on that. And with that, the only remaining discussion is that of an interemergency ordinance, we've kind of hit the ceiling for time to be able to then go forward and process an ordinance, particularly if it does involve zoning regulations. It does have to go back through the Planning Commission and then on to City Council for two hearings and adoption. So I think we're getting near a point that the council should consider an urgency ordinance just to really carry us through to January 1st.
And that would be in any event, is that the right?
That's kind of in any event, whichever direction you take. It'll probably take some time, whether we go ahead and prohibit or try to regulate or really, you know, bring it back through the Planning Commission with some direction from the council for a public hearing.
Maybe this is a question for Sky, but if we choose, if a city chooses not to do anything, and then come January 1st, the, we fall, we are subjected to the laws that are put forth from the Sacramento, where is that looking like now in these five categories? Is it looking like complete personal grow-in, in own residences will be allowed? I don't know where they're, what those rules are looking like.
So if the city does nothing, it currently has in place an express prohibition on marijuana dispensaries, and that's the only thing that it has on the books currently. If you hit January 1 with no additional regulation, what's clear, I mean, the one, the one thing that's very clear is that six, cultivating six plants indoors will be allowed. Without an express prohibition on outdoor cultivation, that might be, like, one could, someone who wanted to engage in that could argue that they were allowed to do that. The state, I don't think, is going to get into a significant amount of regulation of that other than the points that were touched upon in the presentation. But as to any of the commercial operations, it's basically going to be up to the individual businesses to say, well, we would like to get licensed by the state to operate in Larkspur. And the state is then going to look to the information that we've provided about what is allowed and not allowed in Larkspur. And currently, all we'd be able to tell them is that dispensaries are prohibited. So none of the commercial, like, none of the commercial businesses types that they are looking at licensing are expressly incorporated within that. So they, so they may well proceed with the process of licensing those businesses because the municipal code doesn't currently prohibit them.
And just for clarification, what would be an example of those businesses as opposed to a dispensary which would be allowed?
Medical testing, production of edibles, retail sales is argue, it's arguable about whether or not dispensary includes commercial sales since traditionally dispensary has sort of meant a medical facility. And warehousing, business, business sales, those kinds of things are, that whole list of 19 businesses that were included in one slide are the types of commercial businesses that the state is looking to license.
So warehousing would be among those that would be allowed?
Yes.
And, and, and what about baked goods and things like that?
Edibles.
Edibles.
Processing.
Yeah, I mean, processing and the production of consumables, you know, so, so, just to spin that, I don't, I don't want to make it sound like the state would just say yes and suddenly that business would appear. The city's own zoning regulations would still apply. Whether or not there's actually a place in the city about where they could actually establish, like, a manufacturing business to produce those consumables, I don't, I believe, one of, I believe it, this is, it is correct to say that there isn't a place in Larkspur that is zoned for that type of business. So it's not that they would be able to open, but the state, but there isn't also an express prohibition on that type of business that is marijuana-based. So the state might look to process a license and, but they would still have to come to the city to try to get the zoning approvals that were necessary.
So just, so we have, we have like a cupcake baker in Bonner. What could we envision as a possibility?
That, I mean, that would be.
Suzie's Marijuana-infused cupcakes.
But that would be retail sales. And that's, that's one that is problematic in terms of whether or not the current dispensary prohibition actually includes a prohibition on.
That's my question. It sounds like it could, it might, maybe it does and maybe it doesn't.
Right, and, but that goes to the point about the interim urgency ordinance is to make clear that while those, while the city sorts out what regulations to adopt, that we would, we would continue, we would basically not allow any of those businesses while this was developed.
Yeah, assuming that's where, where we're going.
Right.
Councilmember Hiller?
A question regarding the first statement on this slide regarding an interim urgency ordinance. Until January, is it January 18th?
January 1.
January 1. Until January 1, is not the temporary, temporary, is not personal outdoor cultivation already prohibited until January 1, currently?
Well, not, not under medical, and I, and I don't, and it's not something that's licensed by the state, so I think, in essence, the state has said it's up to the cities to regulate.
Yeah, I, so, the, the personal cultivation is not, is something that actually went into effect this year. So the indoor cultivation of six plants, I believe, is legal right now.
And unless specific regulations are in also outdoor cultivation.
So one could argue right now that unless a city has prohibited outdoor cultivation, that, that since they are allowed to cultivate up to six plants on their property, that they would be allowed to do that in the absence of an express prohibition.
I was, I was wanting to, I was wondering just what, in terms of an interim urgency ordinance, the difference between what's shown there versus the status quo, which has stated no regulations specific to personal cultivation. But you've answered that, thank you.
Any other questions? I just have one. You know, one other thing that has always bothered me a little bit about this discussion overall is that we're talking about moving forward with potentially a scheme that would be in compliance with state law, but we haven't been talking about federal law, and federal law hasn't changed in terms of the status of marijuana as a controlled substance. So has there been an analysis either that we've done, I doubt we've done it specifically for Larkspur, but is there available out there, an analysis of, you know, the risks and potential liabilities that cities may face in moving forward with carrying out these programs under California law by virtue of the continued status of the drug as a controlled substance under federal law?
I think the, for my purposes, I think the clearest statement has been, I think, I don't know if it was technically a memorandum, but basically a statement from the U.S. Attorney's Office that was promulgated during the previous administration that basically provided some guidance to cities, basically saying that as law, that, that within reasonable, essentially within reasonable bounds, you know, cities would not face any, and municipal elected officials and other officials would face no personal liability for simply implementing state law. I think that it remains unclear what the current administration's view on that is. They have not offered any contrary guidance, so I believe that guidance remains in effect. But so, I don't think, so until we hear differently, I think it's safe to assume that the, that continuing to implement state law will not put the city or any individual officers of the city in, at legal risk for the time, until we hear differently from the federal government. But I do want to make clear that, of course, the city council is not under any obligation to allow any form of cannabis-based businesses.
Oh, no, sure, I understand.
So it's just, I think, for the, for your and the public's understanding, I just want to make clear that nothing compels the city council to allow anything other than the personal cultivation of six plants indoors. That's the only thing that is currently mandated to be allowed with the city law.
And that is a, as a, as a matter of state law.
Exactly.
And so we would go ahead and, so we might, we might do whatever we're going to do, you know, which may allow some form of commercial activity that's marijuana-related within the city boundaries of Larkspur. But I do worry about the point that you've highlighted, that, you know, the, the risks that cities throughout California are evaluating in terms of potential liability under federal law is based upon policy guidance issued by the U.S. Department of Justice that is now completely different. And we've seen some of the implications of the differences in connection with the thing we started off at the very beginning of this meeting, which is in the immigration context. So I do worry about that a lot. I mean, I've seen in my own professional life, a lot of changes that are occurring in the way in which various regulatory agencies, including the Department of Justice, are addressing issues relative to how those issues were addressed under the prior administration. So I think we would be, it would be very important for us to be mindful of those potential risks.
But on that point, the main burden of the federal rules and also the banking restrictions, et cetera, will fall to the business owner, and that would have to factor into their decision whether this would be a lucrative enough business for them once they knew all those regulatory uncertainties that are coming from the federal government, too.
I'm not, and this is, I'm not reporting to be specific about what the implications of a change of policy direction at the federal level might be. You may be right, but you may be wrong. And again, as we've seen in the immigration context, you know, there are, there are things that are being done in that context that could be used as a model, quite honestly, for new approaches that the federal government might want to take with respect to this issue that we may not have seen in the past.
This was in the paper yesterday. Pot bills on hold. Ten bills aimed at regulating marijuana were placed on hold for the, for the year, giving California cannabis new businesses control time to finish its own rules before lawmakers pile on with additional restrictions. The bill, which were held by the Senate Appropriation Committee, without comment, would have further regulated where pot can be used, how marijuana is marketed, the trademark of products, and would have required the state to produce a consumer guide for buying cannabis. Legislative leaders are working with the administration on a budget, trailer bill to resolve cannabis issues, related issues. It makes sense to take a comprehensive, comprehensive approach. So even 10 bills have been put on hold.
Okay, any other discussion that we want to have before we turn it back to a further discussion on your, getting your microphone, so you have some suggestions?
I just wanted to remind the public that we've provided you with recommendations, but we're seeking guidance so that we might prepare an ordinance if that's the desire of the council, and you're not actually deciding the issues tonight.
Yes, no, I.
But your input and direction will be significant in the preparation of the ordinance.
And I think we want, my own preferences, I would like to go through each of the issues that has been identified in the staff report and take a look at the. that has been identified in the staff report and take a look at the specific recommendations that are included in that context, and in that light, provide you with the direction I think you'll be wanting for purposes of preparing any ordinance going forward. I guess my question is, is, is that what we should be doing now, or should we open it up to some public comment and questions before coming back to that?
This isn't a public hearing, it's a business item, so you have the discretion, Mr. Mayor, to decide how you want to manage the public comment relative to council discussions. So I'll, sorry, I'm going to punt that one back to you.
No, 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 I appreciate that because that gives me flexibility I'm looking for, so that's fine. So I actually would like to hear from the public if there is any public input on these issues, and then I'd like to then bring it back to the council after we have the benefit of that, to the extent that it's out there, and then we'll go through the recommendations. So is there any member of the public that would like to approach the podium and offer their perspectives? So please approach the podium, state your name, where you live, and please again, keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thanks.
Thank you. I am Laura Bertoli. I do not live in Larkspur, but I'm, I consider myself a cannabis activist, and I would be glad to answer questions if you have any. First issue is the temporarily prohibiting personal outdoor. Is that going to be acted on tonight? Because I recommend that you don't, because if you're familiar with growing marijuana right now, it is the end.
We're not acting on anything tonight. We're giving guidance to staff.
Because until the end of September, then everything's going to be pulled out of the ground, so you don't have to worry about that.
This is not an action item.
Okay, so it's only a, like, June to October kind of thing. So the odor's about one month of that, I just want to let you know, so if the odor's a concern. Also, the Prop 215 allowed that, and what seems to be happening is now that we have a recreational approval, we're going backwards, and they're taking things away from us. So keep that in mind. Also, the voters, of course, seventy percent wanted it. I don't know if you did, visited any of the retail outlets, but they're very nice, they're like wine bars, and it's very classy, very nice, I would say maybe ten people at a time are in there, and so if traffic is a problem, I don't think that's a problem, it's like any other retail, I mean, the liquor store right over there, go count how many people go in and out of that place. I think there should be as many retail outlets as there are liquor stores, so that's one of my takes. The taxes, that is very low. I have a friend with a dispensary in Nevada, fifty thousand a day in sales, fifty thousand a day. We're not talking a hundred thousand a year, we're, so that's the wrong number. I do think that alcohol is more of a problem than marijuana, so I just keep that in mind. Kids can get alcohol by walking into Safeway and taking it and leaving, there's no chase, no charge laws, so that's how the kids are getting alcohol. I think marijuana is going to be more heavily regulated with security and stuff, that, that's not a problem with the kids getting it. Also, I'd like to suggest that you watch The Prophet with Marcus Limonis, he has a great show on what this town of Palm Desert did with this whole industry, and they turned around from a bankrupt city to now doing very well. So those are my comments.
Yeah, if you have a clarifying question, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Bertoli. I just had, for my lack of experience, could you just, the odor issue, I'm, what is that? Is that just the plant emitting it?
Yes, there is an odor, if you've ever smelled it, I mean, it, it comes from a plant, and it, and as it's growing, the last few weeks is, are very smelly, so.
Okay, and, and also that the political cartoon with you, and it was quite humorous, so.
Thank you, I can't believe that was news, but whatever.
Counselmember Morrison, you had a question?
How big do the plants grow? How big can they get?
I've seen them about ten feet tall. So they could be seen over a fence if someone wanted to. That's when you're fertilizing and you're, you're feeding it and they grow really tall. Now, you can keep it to a limit, you don't have to let them get that tall, too. So that could be something you could restrict. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Any other members of the public like to offer a perspective on this issue?
Pablo Belora, once again. So I'm just wondering, is there any, any, could any of this get onto a ballot so that there's some public input on some of these decisions? It seems like Larkspur is being more restrictive than the state, and I'm, I'm wondering, that doesn't seem quite to go along with the sixty-seven percent of Larkspur residents that were in favor of the issue on the ballot. And I'm, I'm wondering about the restriction of growing on your property, whether there isn't some kind of property rights that would be violated with that, and what else did I have here? And then I get that it must be locked, would that mean that there would have to be a locked gate going into your backyard if you were growing six plants in the backyard? Yeah, I'm sympathetic to the previous speaker that, you know, alcohol is so, there's certainly no restriction on how close the schools or parks that is, and there doesn't seem to be a very balanced equation here between the, the danger of alcohol and marijuana. So this is happening, this is happening, so if, if Larkspur's going to try and close the floodgates on this, I think it's, you know, it'd be better to just realize that this is going to happen and, and to, to just provide for it in a, in a reasonable way and not restrict, not, not be, I don't know, not restrict something that's going to, to happen anyway, but try, try and be realistic about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. There were a couple of questions in there.
See if I can address what I've heard so far, if you'd like. The estimate that we cited is, on retail sales and revenue, is from San Anselmo's consultant of what the consultant felt was a likely amount of revenue for the types of dispensaries that could be cited in San Anselmo. And so we simply used that for illustrative purposes, and I, I don't know, eighteen million dollars in annual sales, maybe, I don't know, I'd have to ask the consultant if there's a site in Larkspur that could generate that kind of, kind of sale. This speaker asked about the prohibition on growing outdoors. The council would be asked whether you wanted to define the ancillary-related issues of growing outdoors as nuisances, and then you'd be abating nuisances. So you'd be abating, abating the effect of the behavior on neighbors. And one of the reasons staff has suggested not allowing it is so that we don't have to get into the subjectivity that we often do with the abatement of nuisance. And so that, you'd still have the indoor option. The council could allow outdoor grow and could impose the different restrictions that Mr. Toff noted are options to you, just recognizing that you increase the probability of coming out there, and then the police or the enforcement officer gets into that subjective world, whereas if it's just, you can't do it outdoors, that's a pretty clear issue for them to abate. And then I think the speaker asked if it could get on the ballot, I think most things can find their way onto the ballot if the, if the public's so inclined. There was a suggestion in there that the council was being more restrictive than the state, I don't, the council hasn't made decisions yet, so it's not clear if you plan to be more or less restrictive than the state of California. And then lastly, I think the speaker's only partially correct about alcohol sales, I think for many years that was true, there was no relationship to the location of schools relative to the issuance of alcohol licenses. I believe under current law, and it takes different forms depending on the type of license you're drawing from ABC, but schools have a veto power over the issuance of alcohol sale licenses today. In Larkspur, that's a little less relevant only because a lot of our alcohol licenses were issued a long time ago, and those sites have them already, but in, in many newer communities, these newer alcohol licenses are issued, they're faced the same question. And I saw head nodding from Councilmember Chu, who I know is pretty well up on these rules, so I think I'm in the ballpark of explaining that correctly.
Okay, good, you did all right.
Okay, any other, any other members of the public? What, any comment?
There, there was one other question you had put up about the locked gate, and in fact, yeah, the, the state law requires if you do, and whether you do it indoor, if you do it indoor, it has, it has to be locked and secured, so that means pretty much, you know, some protection fencing and, and a gate that's, that's secure to, to keep out. I think probably the intent is to keep out roaming kids from the neighborhoods and so on.
There's also a question about whether or not restricting outdoor cultivation would be a violation of property rights, which I don't think it would. It's a reasonable regulation for public health and safety purposes, so it's an exercise of police powers, so I, I think that's kind of simple. So please give your name and your, your, where you live, and we'll, again, keep this to three minutes.
I'm Dr. Ron Strauss, I'm a practicing medical doctor in private practice now, I spent a number of years on the faculty at UCSF, I've lived in Larkspur since two thousand and five, I have three children and our public schools. There is a great deal of misinformation and misperception about marijuana. I've already forwarded the city council summary with citations from top medical journals of the significant public health threat that marijuana poses. It is, in fact, the most common drug found in people in motor vehicle accidents, including fatal accidents. It is, in fact, addictive, hooking nine percent of people who use it, and actually seventeen percent of adolescents. More regular use in teens is, in fact, associated with brain underdevelopment, a decline in IQ, greater risk for anxiety and depression, dropping out of school, and unemployment. It is associated with chronic bronchitis symptoms, heart attack, and stroke. Since legalization in Colorado, the number of toddlers showing up in ERs with marijuana intoxication has increased. The majority of teens in Colorado Drug Treatment Centers report getting diverted marijuana. In the U.S., marijuana use among high school seniors has nearly quadrupled since the early nineteen nineties. Our worst drug, nicotine, is legal. Tobacco is the number one cause of preventable death in the United States, killing nearly one-half million people annually. It was not always this way. In the eighteen eighties, few people smoked, and only one percent of tobacco was consumed as manufactured cigarettes. But the tobacco industry turned nearly half a million, half of Americans, excuse me, into smokers by the nineteen fifties. We didn't get a free pass with tobacco, we will not with marijuana either. While it may not make sense to criminalize tobacco or marijuana, that doesn't make them safe, and it doesn't mean that governments, even local governments like this city council, aren't responsible for protecting the people, especially the children, within their jurisdiction. The marijuana industry has already gone back to the Philip Morris playbook, progressively more potent formulations, production of edibles that taste and look like candy, advertising featuring young people on buses, they want to hook our kids. The Larkspur City Council shouldn't become an unwitting cog in this ugly machine. The debate isn't about whether the cost of extra police is offset by whatever tax the city collects, be the city council that people thank down the road for sidestepping this, the city council that considered scientific evidence before there was a surgeon general's report on marijuana someday, the city council that knew abetting the commercialization of marijuana wasn't consistent with Larkspur's values. Would we help the tobacco industry in exchange for a little cash? Of course not. Let's not make this mistake with the marijuana industry.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to make a comment? James?
James Holmes, Larkspur. I support all of the recommendations of the staff. With respect to the outdoor cultivation, item number one, I think Councilmember Morrison highlighted a key point, and that is that, with, the problem with the size, you can have it two feet or you can have it ten foot, and six ten-foot plants would just be a huge, huge problem in most of our small lots. So that, that, the fact that it's so difficult to regulate size suggests that it's best not to allow it at all. The real issue is that, though, number five, pot stores. And there are many things that we don't know about regulation of marijuana, but we very much do know how people respond to proposals for pot stores. And here is one example here from the February IJ, Marin Resist Pot Dispenser. Here's another example from the February IJ, Sites For Cannabis Location Asale. The IJ summarized the, the issues as being the applicants drew local opposition with neighbors showing up in, to hearings, letting officials know they didn't want them in their neighborhoods. Unlike many previous efforts to open a legal dispensary in Marin, this time there were supporters for fulfilling the nineteen ninety-six law, but they were drowned out by residents who didn't want one near their neighborhoods, even in liberal-tolerant San Francisco. There is tremendous opposition. Kwan's Pot Shop Gets Chili Reception In Sunset. The bottom line is that when people voted for the proposition, they didn't, that, they didn't want, they didn't want to make pot illegal, but they also, but they didn't necessarily vote for a pot store next door. And so we should not allow retail pot dispensaries. Another point to consider is there are other neighborhoods, I mean, other cities which almost certainly will ban them, like Ross, Belvedere, and Tiburon. So if we allow for them, then, then we're going to have a lot of people coming in from other areas, we're going to be a situs. This really is something that's more appropriate for a more urban area. I've talked about this with my friends who live in Washington where it's been legalized, and they say, oh, there's no problem because it's either in the warehouse district or way out in the boonies. We really don't have either of those venues. We have a semi-industrial area across the highway, but it's also a residential area, and it would be very, very, very poor social justice to subject the people in, poor people in the trailer parks, or the folks who live in the Green Bay Marina, to, to that kind of a thing, and I certainly think that the folks in Hillview Gardens and in Green Bay would not appreciate them, just as the folks in, in Marin.
Thank, thanks, James, we're over the three minutes.
Well, just, I mean, there are five, there are five issues here.
Well, no, we're not, no, we have to give everyone equal time, James, we can't go on for five more issues, we've already done the three minutes.
No, but I mean, in any event, for all of these reasons, I think that you should not allow-
Thank you.
But one other item I wanted to point out, which was not mentioned by the staff-
Thank you, thank you, James, this is not the end of this conversation, so we'll have lots of further opportunities for discussion.
Is it related, including marijuana in the social host ordinance?
Appreciate that.
That's also something that-
Leave that for the city clerk, and we, we appreciate having that, thank you.
All right, that's, that's something that very definitely should be considered as the county.
Appreciate that. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to offer a comment on this topic? Please approach the podium. We're going to save you for last.
I just wanted to make sure I got a talk.
You will.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kelly Jones, I live in Larkspur, I live back in Madrone Canyon, and I, we spoke once before at the earlier session, and, you know, I appreciate the fact, the process that you're going through, it's kind of a tough process, it's obviously a big cultural issue, and that's the way that I look at it, and I think it's important to keep that in mind, that there's, and as I argued before, or stated, I really hope that you don't have a cultural bias on this. And I really disagree with the, some of the facts that the gentleman presented. Marijuana can be addictive psychologically, it's been shown to not be addictive physiologically, you know, I just know that for a fact from personal experience and experience of many people I've known, it's just, it's not even a question, and to say that it's addictive is misleading, it's one of many misleading facts or statements that the man made. I would urge that, there would be ways that people could grow marijuana outside, I understand that there's the, the concern about the nuisance abatement, I understand that that's a burden on the city, but if it's an enforcement under public health and safety, what is the health and safety issue? What is the health and safety issue if, if, if it's required that now and then there's a complaint, an officer or someone has to go out and say, okay, this, this is an objectionable odor or something- this is an objectionable odor or something, then that's something that can be dealt with. It's the, on the other side is the freedom of people to have property rights, as, as the gentleman was saying. And, and I do think it's appropriate to put it on the same scale as alcohol, and look at that. And, and the statement is completely incorrect to say that there, it's not more restrictive. Uh, the, look at the map. Look at how it shrank down to these tiny places. Where can't you buy alcohol? Yeah, I mean, Colonial Liquors is how many feet from the park over there? It's within 600 feet of the park. I mean, let's not kid ourselves. This is a cultural issue, and please try and follow through on the will of the voters. Sixty-seven percent of your constituents said we should legalize it. Now, I understand we need to have some concern. It's appropriate to have concern for another intoxicant, uh, to be added to the, the city, and for, uh, police to potentially have to deal with, and so on. But freedom is on the other side of that, and the voters, it, and, and the gentleman was also correct, that this change is coming to the US. I don't care whether Jeff Sessions is, uh, headed Department of Justice. We should not be overly concerned about federal law. You know, California and all the other states have legalized marijuana for a reason in, against the trend of federal law, and that's because they don't represent it. So please...
Thank, thank you very much.
Act on our behalf.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to take this opportunity to make a comment? Please.
I'm Don Parker. I live in Larkspur. Looking at it from the point of view, I couldn't understand why you were against retail distribution. Uh, you drew up some numbers about the cost of policing and that. Generally, the people with retail operations will do their own policing. Also, your revenues are totally off on this. Currently, the city of San Francisco has about $40 million a year in sales. Uh, looking at what happened in Colorado, it'd be anticipated that after it's legalized, it would be 120 million to 150 million in sales. We have a county of a third of that. We're gonna have $40 million in sales within the county. It's gonna be a large number. But the economics are still back to the same point, though. It's a question of what the people wanted, and the best way to do it is set up what they want. Don't have them go to a different city to get what the product they want. Right now, we're in a situation where people drive to San Francisco, come back out here, drive somewhere else to pick up something. We really don't need that. We, we need to control what we have. We set up a retail operation somewhere in those facilities you set, then at least we have control within our community of what's happening. The one thing I do not like, and this is because I used to be a drug prosecutor, is distribution. I don't like these individuals out there selling their product place to place. I mean, yeah, we know, and I know that there's people get delivery. Unfortunately, what happens to it, you end up with a situation where the guy sets up a route, he distributes the drugs, and then he goes along, well, I'll distribute another drug, and then he gets another drug. And now we have a situation within our community, we have drugs distributed. We shouldn't do that. We should have a retail operation somewhere where we can see what's happening and stop the people from delivering. Or if you're gonna deliver in Larkspur, you have to buy in Larkspur to do your delivery, and we can license and control the delivery within Larkspur. The deal is, when we did Prop 64, the intent was to control the product, and we need to control the distribution of product, make sure it's not an illegitimate product. Okay? If you do, if you allow people to bring in and do data through, or they're gonna use an illegitimate product, they're not gonna have any control over what type of product you're bringing in, which is dangerous. Uh, you've got an individual driving through your community with money, which is bad. It's an, it's a worse situation. So the best thing you should do is have a retail operation. Now, the other operate, the other suggestions you have is to, you know, the consumables and the production and distribution. Those are gonna be big businesses, and we have places within our community we can put those. We can control that within our community. But don't think of it as a revenue project, a revenue source either, because the other product, the situation we've experienced in Colorado, is once people realize they're being taxed on recreational, everybody got their medicinal licenses back, which is not taxed. So the revenue source drops like that right away. But you have to look at it as a situation and control. We need to control something. Our control is to set up in these ways. Now, we can't be any different or much different than other communities. We can't be more stringent in San Francisco, so we should mimic San Francisco.
Okay.
We can't be too, much more different than the state of California, because then we're too restrictive.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Um, again, I wanna keep this kind of equal time here, so we're keeping it to three minutes. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to stand up and offer a comment? Uh, I think we have one more from our...
I'll speak.
Public safety's.
Can I, before the chief speaks?
Yeah.
There are a couple of points that I think are getting confused that might warrant some clarification, or would you like to wait?
Um, you know, let's wait for a minute, 'cause I, there are some confusing things that are going around here, so let's kind of clear them all up in one fell swoop in a moment. And the chief may help in that regard.
I think I've had a slow good public comment before, but the last time I was here...
Just remember, I'm keeping you to three minutes.
So I'm Mike Norton. I work at 250 Doherty. Um, so, yeah, like I said, I, I was here before, and there was a lot of discussion, but I never really got asked my opinion as the chief of police. And this is speaking as your chief, not as my personal opinion. I did wanna reiterate a few things, conversations I've had with citizens, 'cause they seek me out, and a lot of people have said to me that, yeah, I actually voted to state law to legalize it, 'cause I don't think it should be criminal, and I have my own personal thought on that, too. But at the same time, they said I still don't support dispensaries. You know, I want, it should either be personal growth or delivery. And I'm throwing that out there because that's really becoming the muddled thing in all three towns I supervise, 'cause you're not the only ones, the meetings I'm sitting on, I hear the same issues come up, that, hey, sixty-seven percent want these dispensaries. No, that's not really what was voted on. Could you pull up the map on the schools again, Neil? Not to throw you under the bus, but you kind of threw me under, so I'm gonna get you a little bit here. Um, I don't have a pointer. One thing that came up, I had these, I went through many late-night meetings in Corder Madera about 10 years ago. They used to have two medicinal dispensaries. And at the time when it was going through, I'd come to these meetings, and we'd have a crowd like this, some very vocal people on both sides. Once the dispensaries opened, I never got out on a council meeting before, like, 12 PM, or 12 AM, I should say. It was packed out the door once they opened, and it was that silent majority showed up. And one big issue that was coming up was, they looked at schools, they didn't look at daycare centers, they didn't look at preschools. And not to throw you under the bus, but I can tell for a fact, like, the Twin Cities co-op's not here, and you have a green, a pink portion there. I'm guessing there's a lot of...
Actually, it is, Mike.
Is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 600 feet's not as big as you might think it is.
Okay.
Good try, though.
What about all the ones operating out of homes? After-school programs and things like that?
We don't have site data on that, and I'm not actually clear that that's covered by the state law.
And I'm not sure if it is or not, but that was something that came up after the fact.
We have a permitted use in retail for up to, I think, eight kids, what they call small, uh, daycare.
I don't believe the state includes it in the definitions relative to this law, because there aren't clear databases to draw the information upon. It's a more of a practical matter than anything else.
Yeah, you'd have to go into the business licenses.
Why don't, why don't we let the chief finish his comment, and then if anybody has a, a question for the chief, I think we can entertain those.
The other thing I wanted to, it was kind of glossed over, uh, well, what would you do to enforce all this? Uh, you know, we'd get the police or someone to take care of that. And that happens a lot in these discussions, and it happened with the leaf blower, and I sat here for that. Well, the police will just go take care of that. When we have time, we can go take care of that. What we don't have a lot of time is time to go around and handle these, and that is a back burner to a heart attack, to a 911 call, to a crime that just occurred. Those are our priorities. Things like the leaf blowers get pushed back. We go up maybe an hour after they're blowing leaves, they're gone. People get upset at us. Why aren't you enforcing this? Well, we had priorities to take care of. Yeah, we got to it when we could. And that's gonna be with all code enforcement going forward. So I don't think the solution is to make a bunch of money and tax it to get more officers, but maybe you do wanna look at something like a code enforcement that would help you with your leaf blower-type ordinances, as well as marijuana regulation, however you choose to go with that. And finally, I just wanted to hit on the outdoor grows. Um, I've been a cop here for over 15 years, and throughout the entire 15 years, we have taken reports many times. It's lately been medicinal, 'cause medicinals are allowed to be grown outside. They do get stolen all the time. Um, people jump fences, people go through unlocked gates, right around harvest time this time of year. It's no good when they're little short ones, right? And they call us, and we, I mean, it honestly ties us up for about an hour and a half to take a, a theft report. It is property, it does have value, we have to take a report. There is a, a serious time element to that, and that's not just enforcing it. And we do get the calls about the odor and things like that, too. But those are the main points I wanted to hit.
Before you go, let's see if we have any questions from the council.
It, it's a quick question. There's a website called Ease. Uh, the PR firm called, and I think he tried to call all the colleagues, my, the council members. He was concerned, I would like to have, no, ask you if, if this has been a problem in Larkspur. Uh, Ease is a website where you can, uh, talk to a doctor, and then they diagnose, they, you know, figure out what type of edibles, whatever you wanna use, and then they find a dispensary, and they order it. Ease orders through this dispensary, and the delivery person works for the dispensary, not a third party. Are you sensing that, 'cause he says what, what some dispensaries do is they call, you know, they do Craigslist. They find a driver to drive and deliver.
I would've thought when the medicinal passed, that we'd have trouble with dispensaries and calls for service, or...
Or deliveries.
Or robberies, 'cause it's always like, hey, they're driving around with cash, they're gonna get ripped off. And not in our jurisdiction, or in Corder Madera or San Anselmo, have we had any issue ever with a, a delivery-type dispensary. We did have issues with some of the, the medicinal dispensaries in Corder Madera. It was never that they were selling to minors, but we were contacting a lot of minors that had, um, at that time, it wasn't so much edibles, it was more just straight marijuana buds. But, um, they had buds with the stickers on it from the dispensary. And then we never thought that the dispensary actually sold to these 16-year-olds, but, um, what we kind of figured out was, like, an 18- or 20-year-old would go in and buy, and then they'd flip it for profit. And that's what I worry about with dispensaries, with the, the gummy worms and the gummy bears. I went to Colorado, um, six months ago on a separate vacation, and I went into some of dispensaries. I promise I can pass the polygraph, I didn't buy anything. But, um, there is, it does seem to be a lot of stuff either geared towards, you can call it minors, you can call it adults with sweet tooth, whatever you wanna call it. But, you know, the kind of the gummy bears is what, I, put me over the edge a little bit, made me concerned, which we don't see right now, but that's what I worry about.
Any other questions?
Um, kind of a question, or, uh, the League of Califor, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, you know, League of California Cities. We had a fairly extensive discussion about this at two meetings last year. One of the presentations was from the Police Chiefs Association, California, and they had come back with whatever information they had gotten, both from, uh, projected costs, as well as costs that they could already see were being incurred in states that had legalized.
Right.
Um, or, do you, was that ever given to you, or did you have access to that?
I've read that. It was, it's mainly based on Colorado. They've done, I guess it's been a couple of years now, two or three-year studies of, um, you know, and I can't verify it, it's just information that was gathered by the California Police Chiefs Association and disseminated to us, but it did show a significant increase. And a lot of those numbers and statistics were actually pointed out by the, the doctor over here in his, in his presentation to...
Yeah, well, I have those same numbers and studies from Twin Cities Coalition, Healthy Youth, which, you know, I chair, and also from, you know, League's work, so...
And then, you know, the whole alcohol versus marijuana, what's more dangerous? The, the scary trend we're seeing now is, as everyone knows, it's very difficult to do DUI tests, field sobriety tests on marijuana. It's, it's basically like a, it's real, it's really down to a science with alcohol, and it's harder with pills, like a Vicodin or things like that. But what we're finding is when we test blood after we arrest someone for DUI and alcohol, there is also marijuana on board. So it's, you know, I don't know which one's causing more of the accidents or not. And we do have, we have been seeing a proliferation of accidents, where just marijuana's involved. Um, and, you know, it's really hard for us to prove, to be honest with you, in, in the courts. It's much easier to prove a DUI on alcohol based than, um, Oxycontin or marijuana.
It's funny you mention the gummy bears, because some kid had a psychotic episode where he said he had an ear and an arm.
Oh, that is interesting.
So they're pretty potent.
Yeah. Any other questions for the chief? Thanks very much for your perspectives. Appreciate it. Anyone else from, I think we're, that, that was, you were the last public, but I think we're gonna go back, unless there's somebody else we haven't caught. Let's close the public comment process, and I think the city manager wanted to address a couple of things.
There were just a couple of points I thought I might clarify. There seemed to be some confusion. First, there are no revenue projections for the city of Larkspur in any material we provided to you. Uh, what our intent was, we, we asked San Anselmo. San Anselmo went through a similar exercise, but they employed a consultant to say, now look at these properties, and what would be a typical type of retail operation that could work in these properties. And what they were told was, you're looking at a very modest operation that might generate about a million dollars of sales under current business models in your community. So we simply said, with the exception of our light industrial district, most of the properties we're talking about are similar in size and scale. We're not San Anselmo. It's not a perfect analysis. But then we asked the question, if we imposed the tax rates that are being discussed, what would the revenue be on a million dollars, uh, for the city, to then use to, whether you wanna use the word control or wanna use the word offset, but to manage the externalities that are generated by this activity occurring in the community. And that's where we came up with the number of 2.5 million. You're gonna need to have 2.5 million in business to generate roughly the salary of an officer. If it's code enforcement official, maybe you need $2 million. Um, so the point with that is, uh, you had one speaker say, for example, there's $40 million of potential business in Marin. That might be true. I think the question's whether the council wants to allow enough activity to occur in Larkspur to capture whatever amount of money you think is necessary to exercise a level of control over the activity that's occurring in the community. That's the intent of the numbers being thrown around by the staff. They're not intended to be projections on the reality of what the money may or may not generate, but to give you a sense that we will need to have staff to do the regulation that's related to allowing this activity. Um, and so we need to be practical about whether or not this particular activity's going to offset it, or if allowing the activity in the community in and of itself is a social need that warrants subsidy from the general fund. And that's essentially where I would take you in a future conversation, if we done, dove into the numbers. Um, I haven't done any of that analysis, 'cause we haven't gotten to that point in our conversation where we would do that level of analysis for Larkspur. But I think it's fair to say, you would need to allow two or three retail operations of modest size to reach these levels of city revenue, to be a pure offset against our costs, or at least what I conceive as a potential cost. Uh, and I'm just using one staff person as a possible barometer for you to measure it against. I don't actually know how many staff people will be needed, 'cause we're in the great unknown of, of this. And, um, and then just lastly, for the benefit of all my colleagues on staff, and noting the chief's comment, all of the staff have their own personal views about this issue. We've parked all of them and, uh, tried to ask ourselves, if our community's gonna allow this activity to occur, what fits in our community, which is what land use regulation is all about.
Okay. Thanks very much. Yeah, go ahead, please.
Um, help me understand the significance of the deadline you mentioned, uh, plus, uh, the relationship of that to the interim, an interim urgency ordinance. And then, in the future, uh, what, what do those decisions, how do those decisions impact any flexibility we might want long-term, given, given how things change?
Uh, so I'll let Mr. Woodruff stop me if I'm starting to mess this up. But, uh, the deadline is important, because the state says it's going to start issuing licenses. And one thing that we've tried to emphasize throughout the material we've presented to you is, we're talking about businesses that are able to obtain a license from the state to conduct this activity. We're not talking about every fly-by-night operation. Rule one would be, you'd have to qualify to have a state license to do the business. States can start issuing these licenses on, on around January 1 of 2018. They're going to look in a database and say, what rules has the city of Larkspur put in place to restrict our ability to issue licenses? So if you haven't put any rules in place, then you're allowing whatever's allowed by state law within the context of your existing zoning regulations, um, to occur. So that's probably your worst scenario for flexibility for local control. Um, if you're not ready to exercise and make some of these decisions before January 1, the power of the urgency ordinance is it gives you time to signal the state, we don't wanna allow any of this activity yet, we might wanna allow in the future, we need a little time to deliberate it. And now I do need Mr. Woodruff to remind me how long we would have on urgency ordinance.
It's, it's up to two years. I mean, the, the way, the, the way the law's structured, there's sort of an initial period, and then it extends the initial period to a year, and then you can do an additional year on top of that. But it basically adds up to any amount of time up to two years that you want to have the interim regulations in place you can.
But, but after the two years, it does nothing prohibiting us from revisiting our decisions?
No, and in fact, the, the point of the two years would be for the council to use that time to develop a set of local regulations. And then, so, so to follow on, um, Mr. Chorus' comments, you... And then, so, so to follow on Mr. Chors's comments, you initially report to the state, we've adopted an urgency ordinance that says, we're prohibiting everything while we figure this out. You'd figure it out, adopt a new ordinance, and then report to the state, this is what's allowed and what's not allowed in Larkspur.
But down the road, we're still able to have, let, let, let what we do here locally evolve?
Yeah, absolutely, yes. You are not locked into one set of rules forever.
I think our only concern, if I could chime in to point out, I mean, I understand you recognize this, is you have a divided community on how soon they want these activities to occur in the community. And that pressure won't go away. It may grow as the state starts to issue the licenses to businesses in other communities.
Yes.
But as the article I read, the state's even confused on how they want to regulate the marijuana laws and rules. But it'd be nice to have the time to watch how other cities proceed, and how the borders, you know, how the county even proceeds.
Yeah, well, the mixed message, though, is the office that's developing the issue of the licenses seems to be full speed ahead, regardless of whether any other agencies caught up to it.
Or we can take the lead and pave the way. So we've got both, yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we, I'm trying to think how we best ought to do this. I mean, one, just in terms of, in terms of considering, because you did raise the issue about the emergency ordinance, I mean, we could just decide collectively that we're not ready to provide you with some specific recommendations, and that we do think that we ought to do the emergency ordinance for now. That's one thing, and then we don't need to get into the recommendation 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 specifically.
I would support the council considering that.
And, and so that's one way to go now. Or we can, and I'm kind of going back to what Neil's comment was before, we may need to have an emergency ordinance anyway, because even if we gave you some direction tonight, it may take some time, actually, because you're going to have to write the ordinance up, we're going to have to go through public hearings, we may get, who knows what kind of input we're going to, additional input we get from the public as a result of the ordinance that gets drafted up. So we may get booting up against the January 1 deadline in any event.
I just was clarifying with Mr. Woodruff that an option in the mix of all that would be to resolve the personal cultivation questions and place an urgency ordinance on all the questions around commercial activity, which you may want to at least talk about as a possible middle ground, only because we could end up in the gray area on January 1, or, we're in the gray area now, actually, about outdoor grow. And you might want to discuss whether you want to clarify that issue.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that, that point. I mean, my own, my own inclination is to, well, we can get into my own inclination.
And it's an option for you. You could, you could decide that issue and place the urgency ordinance on the remainder of the questions.
Okay, so we could, we could just say, emergency ordinance, we're not going to give you any direction. We could say, emergency ordinance, we want to give you direction on personal cultivation, and then, and do that, but then we have the emergency ordinance that takes care, at least for the time being, of the other issues. Or we can just give you direction and not do the emergency ordinance. If we don't do the emergency ordinance
It's urgency or emergency? Because I'm concerned, okay.
I keep screwing it up.
Sorry. I didn't know if there was a difference.
It's, it's starting to get, it's starting to get late, late, late at night. I think we're going to need to do that, but I'd like to hear from colleagues before we do it.
And just remember, you're giving us direction on what to bring back to you, not to decide tonight.
Right.
No, no, absolutely. And so the question is, do we get the ball rolling on some form of an ordinance?
Well, before we decide, I would put it maybe a different way. In order to buy time, is it not suggested that adoption of an urgency, an interim urgency ordinance would be helpful?
Yes, I, again, my only concern's the gray area on the personal cultivation.
We'll get to that.
On number one.
But I think we, we may all agree that to buy time and let this develop in a rational way, the use of an interim urgency ordinance to do that would be a helpful tool. What that it contains is another issue, and I think, building on that, we may also agree that the status quo on allowing commercial operations may also be something we want to continue while, in, in an interim urgency ordinance, leaving the issue of personal cultivation to be the only outstanding issue worth needing more discussion.
Well.
Would I be reflecting another alternative approach?
Other comments?
It seems like of the five points, the key one that people are going to be the most concerned about is number five, which is whether we permit, or what our ordinance will be about businesses. So if we have a urgency ordinance, until we can nail down what that means for us, then 1 through 4 seem to have less issues of controversy around them, and I would be perfectly fined to have people do personal outdoor cultivation, indoor cultivation, we've already agreed about commercial cultivation as it work, and commercial deliveries, we've already agreed we can't regulate anyway. So am I right in saying that we're really narrowing it down to number five? That's the, those controversial things.
Well, and, and just to be clear, I think, from a discussion standpoint, you're, you're kind of saying, yeah, we've resolved these issues, some of them we actually still need to take action on ordinance-wise, like actually prohibiting cultivation, or whether or not you, there is, there is regulation to right to do that.
Right.
So even the urgency ordinance helps get us through that, but as long as we have direction from you, we can kind of, particularly with outdoor grow, we can kind of move that forward. And, and what you're really saying is the discussion or the decision point on commercial grow is still to be resolved, and maybe we come back to you before bringing forward an ordinance.
Not commercial grow on business, on
Excuse me, on, on business, commercial businesses.
On commercial businesses.
Yeah.
Through the mayor, may I request that you put the slide up that's, is titled, "Discussion, Colon, Interim Urgency Ordinance."
I would, I would propose that the only thing at issue here is the first sentence of the first bullet, or the first part of the first bullet. The rest of it, including the second bullet, I think there may be consensus.
Yeah. Repeat that, Dan.
I'm saying there may be consensus on everything here as a direction, except for the first two lines. First eight words.
In terms of direction for purposes of an interim urgency ordinance, or for purposes
That, that an interim urgency ordinance would be helpful, to buy time while this develops.
Right.
But the only thing at issue would be clarifying our direction on personal outdoor cultivation.
And so we were prepared to give a recommendation on an ordinance with respect to all other matters for which recommendations have been requested?
Well, I think this
Well, do we have consensus on number one?
Well, I was just going to say, an alternative would be, instead of the eight words used there, to continue the status quo, as stated in the staff report, and instead of temporarily prohibit personal outdoor cultivation of non-medical marijuana, those words would be replaced by the words, "No regulations specific to personal cultivation." The rest of it would stay the same, while the city develops local regulations, either prohibiting or conditionally permitting.
Okay, but I want an urgency ordinance for the outdoor cultivation.
Well, that's where we, that's where
That's where we disagree.
Need this, more discussion. I'm saying the rest of it, I believe there's consensus.
Absolutely, yeah.
I kind of, I'm kind of with you on that as well.
So I get what you're saying, I just, I want to still discuss issue one.
I, I, I think that's appropriate, and particularly from an enforcement perspective.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to go wherever you guys want to go with it, because I'm about a year and a half ahead of you, and I don't
We knew you were smart, but
No, I mean, for me, I've, I've been working with this since the beginning of 2016, you know, and
But I do want, I would like to hear your perspective.
Well, my perspective is that I would go with the existing staff recommendation and not even deal with the commercial activities unless we got specific feedback from our community, our community, Larkspur's residents, that that's something they want, because the chief pointed it out perfectly, and it's all the feedback we had gotten in the polling when they went with Prop 64. You know, you got a lot of people who wanted to decriminalize marijuana, and it was the same in Colorado. But they, they didn't necessarily mean that they wanted those activities within their community. And for, for the vast majority of the feedback I've gotten from this community, and I don't know if it's because of my associations and the work that I do on these particular topics, but there hasn't been anybody that's come to me and said, you know, we ought to have retail sales of marijuana in Larkspur.
I think there may be consensus on the council.
Oh, well, I don't know about that.
Wait, wait a minute, we're, we're going to, I want to impose some rationality on this conversation right now. So what I, what I'm hearing from you, Councilmember 2, is that you would be comfortable with us proceeding this evening by adopting the recommendations of the staff report on all of the items.
Yes.
Okay, so
But if you want to discuss it more, I'm fine with it too.
No, 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 I just want, I understand that. I don't, I'm just trying to get understanding what your, your point of view is, because I share that point of view. So that would be my personal preference as well.
But I have a
But I think we need to make sure everybody else on the council has their say.
Guys, if we do go ahead and do Option C for, for issue one, prohibit, prohibit all outdoor cultivation, right, and we don't do the, what is it called, the urgency ordinance?
Of course, of course. So, my question to you is, if we go ahead and prohibit all outdoor cultivation for issue one, okay, and, or decided to, is that it? Is that the end of discussion for that? But if we do an urgency ordinance, that will come back in two years for another discussion?
If you prohibited outdoor cultivation, that would be the end of the policy discussion by the council regarding outdoor cultivation, until the council decided to take up that issue again. You wouldn't necessarily have to include regulation of outdoor cultivation as part of reviewing the other set of policies that would take place while the moratorium was in place, during the two-year interim ordinance period.
We'd have to come back to it.
You wouldn't, you would, sorry, no.
Would not. We can keep it as is. So either or, okay.
Right, the state is
If the state.
Right, because the state's really, other than, other than things like securing it, the state is really not, it, introduce, the state is not licensing personal outdoor cultivation, let's put it that way. They, that's, that's, so, once, if the city council says no to outdoor cultivation, that issue is pretty much dealt with, it's the other ones that still need to be addressed.
But, but one clarity, point of clarity is, we'd still have to actually adopt an ordinance clarifying, stating that. And that could probably be a health and safety code ordinance as opposed to zoning, and that, we'd have to decide how to do that. But if it's a zoning, if it's zoning-related, it has to go through Planning Commission. If it's a health and safety code just under the council, then that's a quicker version.
So is one way to maybe deal with this, because I think we've heard, we've heard from folks at this point, would be to go through the recommendations on each item one by one, because I want to make sure that you have clarity in the guidance that the council is giving you, for purposes of whatever we're asking you to do. So to go through each of the issues and each of the recommendations attached to those issues, and have a sense of the council about whether to adopt the recommendation for a particular issue, or to have that issue addressed within the framework of an interim urgency ordinance.
Yes, and I, and I think, first getting us the guidance will help, will help direct us on what we need to do for, for the emergency ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll start.
And it may be that we, if we go through that exercise, we decide that we want to have all the issues addressed within the framework of an interim urgency ordinance. I'm going to get that right eventually. Or we may provide you with some alternative direction with respect to individual issues and recommendations. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
To folks? So let's go through them one by one. Issue one, personal outdoor cultivation. Is it the sense of the council that we either adopt the recommendation that staff has articulated, or that we allow this issue to be addressed at a later date and have it subjected to the, the urgency ordinance?
I thought it would be an urgency ordinance.
Well, personally, I think we should allow outdoor cultivation under number one, where odor regulations are an option, and we just allow six, using a secure, locked, and not visible from the public street, public right-of-way, public parker's school for personal use. That's my interest.
I would agree with that, not because of a personal bias, but because I, I just think it's, it's going to be impossible to enforce
It will be.
These things on private properties. You're going to have neighbors using this as a means to harass their neighbors, and I just don't think that's going to be effective.
Can I get some clarity?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Hillmer's comments are not consistent with Vice Mayor Way, who's, I'm sorry, Councilmember Way, because Councilmember Way is saying she wants nuisance regulation put on it, on odor.
No, no. No, no.
That's what I thought you were saying.
Number one, what you have on A.
So just, it's allowed pursuant to state law, and residents cannot complain about their neighbor's activity if they're not violating state law. Is that, you need to be clear about this, because if you want local control
Okay, you got a point, yeah.
Can I have, can I ask a question?
Because I do think Vice Mayor Hillmer is saying, he doesn't want any additional nuisance regulation, which is, you know, again, that, that's easy for the city.
Are there nuisance regulations in place now?
For odor.
No, we're in the gray area where
Right now, the status quo is no regulation specific to personal cultivation.
Beyond the state law.
Beyond the state law. That, that's what I propose.
So I just, I just want to be clear, that means you cannot, as a neighbor, you have no right to complain about the activity affecting you.
All right, explain how a nuisance, I, I may agree with you. I want to understand how the nuisance issue is dealt.
Some communities are concerned, have expressed concern about the smell effect that's created by growing marijuana plants.
Could we amend that later? I mean
You can't.
You can't?
You can, you can, this is a scenario you could regulate later.
I mean, we're consuming, there's a problem, that there'll be an odor problem, and I, I don't even know if that's true.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with creating a proper nuisance provisions. I just, right now, can't imagine it being effective getting into people's private property like that.
I'm, I'm okay either way, I just want to make sure we're clear. Because the odor regulation, I'll admit, kind of scares me as a staff person, because I don't know what becomes tolerable and not tolerable and measurable and not measurable and
Listen
So my, 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 my problem here is that we're having different folks articulating different views, and that means we don't have a consensus. So I don't know that we can give you guidance, and if we can't give you guidance, then I don't know what you're going to do in terms of writing up an ordinance.
You could, you can be silent on this issue, and we will maintain the status quo, and you do not lose your ability to regulate it later. And so that might be the, the position of consensus, do nothing now and decide later.
I think we got it.
But is that called an urgency ordinance?
Sorry, but
Sky's been reminding me, this particular issue's more of a local control issue, because the state's not going to get involved with this issue. So you'll have the ability to regulate it later. There's not the looming January 1 deadline of anybody being issued a license.
Can I give you an alternate viewpoint? If we prohibit it now, then you maintain the status quo. But if you allow it to occur and then prohibit it later, it's going to be harder to take It is if we go with C.
But it's permitted now under state law for indoor grows.
But you're asking, which one do you, which one do you prefer? I prefer C.
So we don't have, well, should we take a vote? We have my idea out there, and
Clarify your proposal.
Personal outdoor cultivation, issue number one, is to permit, that it's provided, if it's in an area that's securely locked, it's not visible from public street, public right-of-way, public parker's school, plants can be visible from adjacent yards and residences, and we don't regulate odor.
But we can amend that later.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've got chickens in my neighborhood, and if they get smelly, I can try to
Yeah, let's not keep, the public's going to have a really hard time following this when we're talking over each other.
So you want option A?
Yeah, that's what I'm putting forward. I mean, I'm trying to put forward some
That's kind of the most permissive approach under state law, allowed by state law.
Right.
Councilmember 2, would you support that?
No, I, I was going to go with staff recommendation, C.
Yeah, I'm going to go with staff recommendation, C.
I'll go C too. C, of the urgency or C?
I'm sorry, I
You meant C.
I meant the staff recommendation.
Which is to prohibit all personal outdoor cultivation.
Yes.
And I'm with option C too.
And that's that.
Can I ask why?
Yeah, so we, like I just said, we can Yeah, so we, like I just said, we can change that later. It's easier to change that to be more permissive than go the other way around if we're unsure about what we wanna do. I'm not unsure about what I wanna do, but if you're unsure about what you wanna do, it's an easier position to work into.
You can always add to it.
That makes sense to me. Any objection?
Yes, so we'll continue to, we're gonna be holding a public hearing about this and this before January, I'm sure.
If we, if we give direction to staff to write up an ordinance, yes.
Yes, we would probably bring you two ordinances if we go in that direction. One would be, we would come up with proposals for an ordinance on how to regulate this under code, and then at the same time, whatever direction you give us on the other issues, we'll probably be bringing them at the same time, at some time in the near future.
So.
For a public hearing.
Just a clarification for my colleagues who are looking at option C, is it based on, cuz you, cuz we're gonna, we're, you have to allow indoor cultivation of six plants. So what is your, what is the concern about outdoor?
The smell.
Everything that you're, everything that's already been pointed out about what's permitted.
One, what it can cause, I can just see the neighbors just going after each other, and it would come to us.
Why, I didn't even say that.
Indoor, it's your own personal indoor, it's not your side.
Speaking of your bikes, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I always do that, I apologize.
So it's really about the odor? Size?
Presence, complaints, all kinds of things that you avoid.
All of above.
By making a prohibition and allowing a property owner to do what is allowed under state law, which is to grow indoors.
I don't know if any of that's, I mean, I think that's an assumption that those are gonna be issues that are gonna come up, that people are gonna look at it and find odors. We haven't tested that yet. We haven't seen if that's what's gonna happen with people using six plants in an outdoor grow.
I have a suggestion.
I know, what?
I propose that you instruct us to have a public hearing on this issue alone and that we bring you ordinances for both of these options and we make the community aware they should come and let you know what they think.
I like that idea.
I agree.
That's fine.
So, so how does that fit into the urgency part?
That, that's done, not part of the urgency discussion.
All right.
We will just do that.
Go to number two.
Put the urgency, urgency ordinance slide back up. So I'll go back to proposing this except for the first eight words of the first bullet, which you just provided a solution for, have a public hearing addressing those eight words. Or not?
You don't need the first bullet under what I've proposed. We'll just bring you personal grow as its own issue, we'll make sure the public's aware it's their chance to weigh in.
Love to hear more from the public.
And here's what you're debating.
There'll be two ordinances on that issue.
So our direction would be this slide minus the first bullet.
I think that's where you're headed.
Yeah.
I think that's.
But again, just to clarify, so the, so staff would prepare two alternative ordinances to address issue number one.
What I heard as actual consensus among the council member was to reduce the regulatory challenges for the city, so on personal grow, it's either not allowed, where we have to regulate, but it's just any activity is illegal, or it's completely permissive within the bounds of state law, and we just have to be aware of state law. And so we would.
But Dan, why are you doing that when three of us already did option C?
I have.
Well, cuz this isn't.
This isn't a decision tonight.
Oh, it's not an action item, that's true, that's true.
So I was proposing how it might come back to you constructively so you could resolve your differences.
Yeah, cuz then if we have an ordinance in front of it, it, us, it does become an action item.
And if we properly notice the community that you intend to make a decision between these two.
Right.
Then as the chief alluded to, you might get a very different dynamic in the crowd.
I think that's, I think that's valid and I think that's what I would encourage happen.
And just for clarification, that proposition 64 does not prohibit somebody to grow outdoor plants for medicinal use now. They can still do six outdoor plants or so for medicinal use, or do we know? I mean, for personal medicinal use, not recreational use? Right, so that's already.
The original Prop 215 rules that allow cultivation as part of, for personal, for personal medicinal use or as part of, part of a cooperative for, for those, those supportive purposes, that's still allowed. What we're talking about is recreational.
But it's still growing pot plants outside, one way or the other.
It is, but I also think that, you know, you, I, how do I wanna put this? If there has been any cultivation in Larkspur for, under the 215 rubric, it doesn't appear, I mean, I don't.
Doesn't appear to have been a problem.
Doesn't appear, but that doesn't necessarily mean anything about, allow, that doesn't tell us anything about what may happen under a new regulatory framework in which cultivation for recreational purposes would be allowed.
And one, one more thing, if we create an ordinance, and we're still debating this, that prohibits recreational outdoor grow, what's to stop somebody from saying, oh, I've got a 215 card and I'm making it for my own personal outdoor medicinal grow? What's to stop that? Mike has an idea.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we, yeah, we'd have to, I mean, we would have to, we, we would treat it like any other code enforcement matter. If we prohibited outdoor cultivation for personal use and there was a complaint and there was an investigation and a code enforcement effort, then they would have the opportunity to present that information and we would have to address it as part of it.
That they had a medicinal use for.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, well.
Could the, could the chief, chief, can you, chief, can you come up to the podium, please?
That's what's happened for the last.
Twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, that's what happens, is a neighbor will call and say that the odor or someone's growing, and we'll go out there and contact them and.
They'll have a card.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, they present the card and we go, thank you, and we make a note in our logs. So in a perfect world, if someone calls again, we don't have to interrupt them, we just go, hey, it's legal, we're aware of it.
So I can see, well, we'll, we'll move on, I can see dozens of, just, that's, that's what's gonna happen, but, I mean, getting your card is just like going to Amazon these days.
Yeah, don't get me started on that.
So do we, does, does staff have sufficient direction with respect to this issue?
Dan, nice idea.
All right, we're on number two.
And we're on number two. Do we wanna get into these items individually?
I actually would suggest this might be the recommendation I feel most strongly and sound about. I just think, and you indicated that in February, it's just not an area to really get into. People are gonna grow indoors and as long as they're compliant with all the appropriate codes, end of story, yeah.
So that's, is that consistent with?
That's consensus.
So we have direction to the staff on issue number two. Issue number three, recommendation is prohibit commercial cultivation of marijuana throughout the city.
Yeah, we don't have the last one.
And I'm assuming, unless, if you wanna take a sort of a straw vote, I'm assuming that's our, continues to be the direction.
I, I would like to make sure everyone agrees with that. That's certainly my sense of it, so I think that is the direction we have on that. Issue number four, commercial deliveries, part of the reason I'm going through all this does, there is a public out there and they're kinda listening to what we're doing. So issue number four, commercial deliveries by businesses not located in Larkspur and the recommendation, no probation or regulation of deliveries by state licensed businesses of marijuana products into Larkspur. Are we comfortable with that as a recommendation to the staff?
Yep.
Seeing everyone nodding, that is the direction.
So, so they're gonna bring you the sales tax money with a bag of nickels or something to launch a cash business?
You know, it had occurred to me that, that measure C slash measure B might apply if a business legitimately calculates, yeah. Lot to be worked out, yes, but.
But it might.
Okay, down to the tough one, five.
Tough one is on, well, issue number five, regulation of the forms and types of marijuana-based businesses, and this may be the one where we do the urgency ordinance.
I believe that was what Vice Mayor Hillmer was putting forward.
So that's, is that.
That works with me.
Consistent with the rest of the council's inclinations. My hearing, I'm, I'm seeing Councilmember Two nodding.
Well, I, I mean, like I said.
I understand, I understand.
If you need more time to go with an urgency ordinance, I'm fine with it.
This is for purposes of getting through the evening tonight, so, so that's what we will do. We will go with the urgency recommend, or the urgency ordinance on, on that one.
And then are we gonna ask for sample ordinances to come back to us that are specific to?
So I think as part of the item, when we bring you the urgency ordinance, we'll have to ask for a brief discussion from you of how you want the process to look for community engagement on this issue during the, the period when the interim urgency ordinance is in effect. So at that time, I think we would talk about what we would do, and it might involve looking at, as cities become permissive on this issue, evaluating what they're doing.
So Emeryville and Fremont have ones, I've looked those up as an, as good, sort of similar, I mean, they're bigger sized cities, but it's an example of ones that they've already passed ordinances, so I'd love to see some other sample ones.
Your staff's monitoring, I think you've actually identified the most significant challenge, the cities that are already ahead of the game in passing a lot, it's, they tend to be the larger cities.
Right.
That have more dynamic commercial opportunities, particularly ones that have larger industrial areas where these types of businesses have tended to wanna be located, so that's, that's, it would be great if we, if we take this pause, hit the pause button, it'd be great if communities similar to Larkspur do start to enact these ordinances, although it's quite possible we are all gonna hit the pause button and be waiting for each other to act.
People often forget that Fremont is the fourth largest city in the Bay Area and it has a very diverse commercial industrial, I mean, it's a big city.
Well, and some of your speakers talked about the revenue numbers being much larger, that my colleagues in some of the cities with large warehouse districts are talking about pretty substantial revenue being generated by these businesses, but that type of space just doesn't exist. For us, it probably doesn't exist in very many places in Marin, so.
One of the things, if you and your colleagues at the Marin Managers Association get together and do an analysis for Marin, I, I would say don't make the Webvan mistake, which is that they only looked at a singular business and never considered the dilution of revenue if there were competitors. You know, I mean, there's only, there's only a certain market that Marin can support.
That's, that's why Instagram, or, no, Instacart, Instacart's doing so well right now. Okay, is there anything more?
I understand what you're saying, Councilmember.
Anything more on this issue?
At the appropriate time, could you please help provide information regarding communities that have defined the nuisance issues around.
We can do that.
Odor and size, and so we might have some illustrative examples of how that's dealt with if outdoor cultivation is allowed.
We can do that. It's a good idea. Anything else on this? Then I guess we have no more items, oh. Wait a minute, we do 4.4. We have 4.4, we have to go back to 4.4.
So. So, yeah, so if the audience wants to remain, we're gonna take up from the consent calendar the issue of going paperless and the policy around use of electronic devices at the dais. As I see some of the, I'm just leaving, the city clerk is gonna bring you some sample language. We became, we had some questions about the specificity of the measure that we provided to you, the policy that we provided to you, and we talked it over with the city attorney. We had brought you a policy with a set of guidelines based on samples we had seen from several other cities. The Brown Act, though, some of the policy was to, to be very specific about certain elements of the Brown Act as they might relate to this activity. It was suggested to us and we conferred with the city attorney that we can generalize the policy to simply say the council commits to acting under the Brown Act with the use of electronic devices and that that would actually be not only more, not only sufficient, but in some respects more dynamic cuz then the policy evolves with changes in the Brown Act, so, and as the council's aware, application of the Brown Act to electronic devices is a constantly evolving subject. So under the revised policy, it would simply say, we've stricken out some specific lines about the way you would conduct yourself and simply said, you agree to conduct your business in compliance with the Brown Act with relate, with respect to using these devices. I didn't give a formal staff presentation, but just generally for the benefit of the public, the council is adopting a policy so council members can commit to go paperless if they so choose.
Okay.
So this is.
The one that we just distributed is our proposed revised that we'd ask you to adopt with the more generalized language.
Okay, are there any comments or questions from council on this item?
Well, it addresses the issue that I had brought up to the city manager, so I'm fine with revised language.
Okay, Councilmember Hillmer? Unless there's anything else, let's have a motion.
I'll move adoption of resolution number 61 slash 17.
Do we have a second?
You have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the, the motion is adopted. And I think that concludes the formal agenda, and I think we're ready to adjourn. What I'd like to do, though, if I, if it's all right and the council will indulge me, is to adjourn in acknowledgement of, of our fellow citizens in large parts of our country that are suffering under the terrible and devastating consequences of Hurricane Harvey and are in the process of experiencing what could be even a worse situation as a result of Hurricane Irma. I saw some of the news reporting earlier today on what Puerto Rico is currently facing. The storm track is making a beeline for South Florida, will go up South Florida and head right to my parents in, in South Carolina. So with, with our prayers, with all of the people who have already experienced hardship as a result of these terrible storms and who we may anticipate will experiencing further hardship, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, opposed, we adjourn.